Good evening. The school committee business session of January 13, 2025 will now come to order. This meeting is being recorded and will be made available for viewing on the Methuen Public Schools website. Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Member DeZoglio?
Present.
Member Donovan?
Present.
Member Keegan?
Present.
Member Maxwell?
Present.
Member Shabelia?
Present.
Member Willeth?
Here.
Mayor Borghardt?
Here. All are present. We need a motion and a second to accept the agenda for January 13, 2025 as presented.
So moved. Second.
Motion from Member Shabelia, second from Member DeZoglio. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it and our agenda has been accepted. Superintendent, I'll invite you at this point to introduce our student for tonight's flag salute.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to call up Sayana Tumolion up to the podium with Ms. Goyet, the lower school associate principal from the Tenny. Mr. Hill, the supervising principal, is also here to support our flag salute today.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Amanda Goyat-Langis and I'm the lower school associate principal at the Tenny. And I'm here with Saynaa tonight. She's a fourth grade student in Mrs. Powers' class, who's also joining us tonight at the Tenny. Saynaa lives with her mother Landy and her father Nestle, and her brothers Joshua and Hakim, and her aunt and her three cousins and her cat Felix. And her mom is here with us tonight, too. Saynaa reported she loves to spend time with her family. One of her favorite things to do with her family is to go out to eat. Saynaa revealed IHOP is her favorite restaurant because of their yummy burgers and pancakes with whipped cream. She also enjoys going to church with her mom. Her most special family memory is a road trip to Pennsylvania, which included visiting a water park. Saynaa's favorite subject in school is science. It's her favorite subject because she is learning lots of new things and it is fun. She says her favorite lesson was the paper bag science experiment, where she had to use her senses to describe an object hidden in the bag. Saynaa also likes to read. Some of her favorites are the Junie B. Jones series and Kate D. Camillo books, especially because of Winn Dixie. Her favorite special is PE. She reports that she loves PE because she gets to run around and exercise. She says the best activity in PE is the game Messy Backyard. She likes this activity because it is competitive and a cooperative game. Next year, she's looking forward to being in fifth grade and using the upper school big gym. Saynaa's teacher, Mrs. Powers, states Saynaa is a true Tenny rock star. In class, she is attentive and always ready to learn. She is helpful to her classmates and is a responsible member of our community. Saynaa actively participates in class and enjoys working in a group with a partner or by herself. Saynaa wants to do well and tries hard and will even do extra practice at home to learn new skills. A perfect example of the conscientious person Saynaa is, is when she was chosen to recite the Pledge of Allegiance for the school committee. She carried around a copy of the pledge and practiced it every chance she got. Saynaa always has a smile on her face and we at the Tenny are so lucky to have her as a Tenny rock star student. When Saynaa is not in school, she is very active and has quite a few hobbies. She likes to draw anime. She likes to read. She takes swimming lessons at Goldfish Swim School. She participates in gymnastics at Interstate Gymnastics. And she's most proud of mastering a back handspring. She also takes tap ballet and jazz dance lessons. And jazz dance is her favorite because it requires attitude. When Saynaa grows up, she reports she sees herself becoming both a gymnast and a dentist. Saynaa stated the Tenny is a special place because people are kind and respectful. Her favorite memory is being nominated and recognized as a Tenny star in first and second grade. Her second favorite memory was the third grade field trip to Davis Farmland. She says that one of her favorite things at the Tenny is earning gold slips for demonstrating perseverance and responsibility for learning for the show What You Know Gold Slip Raffles. Saynaa, we all agree you make the Tenny a special place because you're one of the kindest and most respectful students in the building who demonstrates Tenny Rock's behavior each and every day. Thank you. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
That was cute.
Ms. Powers, come on up. Yes, Ms. Powers. The long walk to the front, my dear.
Very nicely done. Thank you. At this point, we're going to open the organizational part of tonight's meeting. I'll begin by accepting any nominations for the position of vice chairperson. Do we have any nominations? Member Donovan?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Member Keegan, please.
So we have Member Keegan nominated. Is there a second?
I will second that.
Member Keegan, do you accept the nomination?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any other nominations for vice chair? If there's no other nominations, we will proceed to a roll call vote on Member Keegan.
Member DeZoglio?
Yes.
Member Donovan?
Yes.
Member Keegan?
Yes.
Member Maxwell?
Yes.
Member Shabelia?
Yes.
Member Willeth?
Yes.
Mayor Borghardt?
Yes. Congratulations, Madam Vice Chair. At this point, we need nominations for secretary of the committee.
Mr. Chairman, I'll nominate Member Shabelia. Second.
So we have Member Shabelia nominated. Member Shabelia, do you accept?
Sure.
Any other nominations for secretary? If there are no other nominations, I will close nominations and we will proceed to a roll call vote.
Member DeZoglio?
Yes.
Member Donovan?
Yes.
Member Keegan?
Yes.
Member Maxwell?
Yes.
Member Shabelia?
Yes.
Member Willeth?
Yes.
Mayor Borghardt?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Congratulations. We need a motion to appoint Superintendent Brandy Quong as secretary to the committee. Just as a note, this is a formality since I automatically serve as the chair. So we need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Member Shabelia, second from the vice chair. Discussion? There's no discussion. We will take a roll call vote.
Member DeZoglio?
Yes.
Member Donovan?
Yes.
Member Keegan?
Yes.
Member Maxwell?
Yes.
Member Shabelia?
Yes.
Member Willeth?
Yes.
Mayor Borghardt?
Yes.
Unanimous.
At this point, I will close the organizational part of the meeting and we will move on to participation by others tonight. Superintendent, I'll invite you to introduce our SOAR award student.
Thank you. I would like to call up Maureen Melanson. She's our CTE, our Career Technical Education Lead Teacher, and Ella Benson tonight.
Hi, everyone. My name is Maureen Melanson. I'm the CTE lead teacher at the high school. We're here tonight to give Ella Benson our SOAR award. So the Career Vocational Technical Education Department is delighted to honor Ella Benson as this year's recipient of the CTE award. This distinguished recognition celebrates students who demonstrate outstanding qualities. And Ella, you truly embody everything that this award represents. Your time at Methuen High School has been marked by dedication, growth, and achievement. And we are very proud of your-- sorry, we are very proud to celebrate your many successes today. Ella exemplifies what it means to be a hardworking, motivated, and passionate student. Her impressive academic performance, combined with her active participation in extracurricular programs, highlights her commitment to personal and professional development. Having completed both Marketing I and Marketing II, Ella is currently thriving in the externship program. As part of her externships, she has gained hands-on experience at Allison Taylor Photography Company, where she has been praised for her creativity, professionalism, and drive. Her ability to take initiative and constantly produce high-quality work has made her a standout contributor to the team. Beyond her externship, Ella has shown exceptional leadership as the vice president of DECA. Her competitive success speaks volume about her skills and determination. Last year, she placed seventh at the district competition and advanced to the state competition. This year, she earned third place in the district competition with her innovative Mystic Cleanse commercial business plan and will compete at the Massachusetts DECA State Career Development Conference in Boston this February. Ella's passion for marketing and business strategy shines through all of her endeavors. Her mentor, Mr. Regatto, says that, quote, "Ella is one of those students that you wish you had 25 of." She takes every task to the next level and doesn't shy away from a challenge. She is very passionate about business. And according to Mr. Regatto, Ella approaches each challenge with enthusiasm, focus, and creativity, always striving to exceed expectations. Her genuine love for marketing and business has positioned her as an outstanding role model for her peers. Outside of the classroom, Ella enjoys exploring creative projects, strengthening her communication skills, and building connections within the marketing field. Her vibrant personality paired with her exceptional work ethic sets her apart as a future leader in the industry. As Ella looks towards her future, she plans to continue her studies in communication and marketing. Given her talent, drive, and determination, there is no doubt she will continue to achieve great things and make a lasting impact. Ella, on behalf of the Methuen High School and the CTE department, it's an absolute privilege to present you with the CTE SOAR award. Your leadership, dedication, and passion for business make you an extraordinary student. Congratulations, and we look forward to seeing all that you accomplish as you continue to soar.
Good evening. Thank you. I would like to thank all of my teachers from the Marsh and the Methuen High School, including my DECA advisor, Mr. Regatto, and Ms. Thompson, as well as all of you here at the school committee for the profound support that you guys give the Methuen as a whole and all of the academic privileges that you guys have given me. Thank you.
At this point, Superintendent, we'll have the introduction of the CTE students being recognized.
Yes, I'm going to turn this right back over to Maureen Melanson. And there's a memo in your packet that sort of outlines, I think, our discussion tonight and who we're recognizing. So hopefully this will help this evening.
Thank you, guys. So our CTE department has had a lot of competitions that have come up. We have a few students who are here tonight to talk about specifically some competitions in the computer pathway as well as the marketing pathway. So I'm going to start off with Yasmin Brita for the computer pathway.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Yasmin and I'm a junior at Methuen High School. I've been involved in the computer science department. Since I was a freshman, I began by taking the Computer Science Essentials course. And last year, in my sophomore year, I took the Computer Science Principles course. And this year, I'm enrolled in the AP Computer Science A course. So throughout my high school experience, I've been involved in this department. And if I'm being completely honest, we have progressed in ways that I can't even tell you about, but that I'd rather show you through the achievements that we've had. So one of a pretty popular achievement that has been talked about kind of recently was last year, we, a team of two other students and I, we placed first in the computer science category at the Applied Learning Student Showcase. And so I'd like to talk a little bit more with you guys about that. So the Applied Learning Student Showcase is kind of what it sounds like. It celebrates students across Massachusetts and their work in applied learning. So if you're not familiar with applied learning, it's a research-backed concept that kind of encourages students to do hands-on work in order to solve actual problems. So to provide, you know, good solutions to real-world problems. And so at the Applied Learning Student Showcase, students from all different departments are kind of showcasing their solutions to all different types of problems. So problems in computer science, biomedical engineering, medical research, all different areas. The area that we were focused on was computer science. And so students in all different computer science courses have different problems that they're supposed to solve and different categories that their projects follow. So for us last year, we had to use Python to solve some type of real-world problem because in the Project Lead the Way Computer Science Principles course, Python is taught. And if you're not familiar with Project Lead the Way, it's kind of just like the curriculum that our school follows to teach computer science. So last year, what I and a team of two other students, Thomas Lee, who was a senior, and Luke Finch, who was also a senior, we worked on a project called Detecting Recyclable Items. And so basically what we did was we used computer vision, which is kind of like a computer's ability to see essentially. We used a pre-trained library, pre-trained computer vision library, and modified that so that it could detect recyclable items to a certain degree of certainty. And what we did as part of our project was we modified that pre-trained library so that it would be able to suit our needs. And so we were able to have it only say that it could detect this item as a recyclable item if it met that threshold of a degree of certainty. So if it was, for example, 60% or higher, then it would tell us that it was certain that that's a recyclable item. So items like spoons, bowls, things like that. And we brought a bunch of different ones over to the showcase to kind of demonstrate our inventions ability. And so at the showcase, we presented it and ultimately, we won the Outstanding Computer Science Projects Award, which is the top award in the computer science area at the competition. We were very excited for a lot of reasons. One, because during the actual event itself, we were able to get so much positive feedback from industry professionals, professionals from Liberty Mutual, Bay Systems, Pic Code. So real-world companies that have software engineers or are software engineering-focused companies. And being able to receive that positive feedback and ultimately winning the award kind of showed us just how much we've learned as students in the school. You know, like sometimes it's hard to feel, obviously, like software engineering is a real field. And sometimes if you're in school, it's kind of hard to feel like, am I doing anything? But this, we have learned so much. And we were able to demonstrate that by having these industry professionals tell us that this is something, you know, worthy of winning an award. So that was one reason. Another reason was part of our award is that we were able to visit the Liberty Mutual headquarters in Boston and take a tour and a job shadow at the headquarters. And so we shadowed software engineers, product managers, a bunch of different positions in the area of computer science. And that was a great experience for us to not only apply what we've learned, but to kind of just get a taste of what our future could be like if we were to continue in computer science. So that was a great experience. Not only that, but just about a month ago, I believe, the Student Solve Challenge, three students from Mrs. Narv's class were able to win that competition. And I participated in that competition as well. And what that was, it was kind of similar to the Applied Learning Student Showcase, except this was a virtual event. And so real-world companies gave us real-world problems to solve. And so they were looking for the most inexpensive, kind of feasible solutions that they could use to solve these real-world problems. So students and groups from different schools were assigned to different companies, and our school was assigned to Verizon. And so we were asked to solve these customer service-related problems and kind of help customers understand what they need to do to seek help from Verizon or to get certain products. And so we were asked to like kind of figure out a way to do that in a way that would be as feasible as possible. And the students that won from our school created a video that would kind of explain to customers what Verizon offers. So they were able to come to a solution that was not only inexpensive, but would work for the customers and would work for Verizon. And so they won an award and they were also offered a trip to the Verizon Innovation Center, I believe it was. So as you can tell, you know, the computer science department, we're not only learning how to code, but we're learning the skills that it takes to become involved in the real world and to not only become involved, but to succeed. We're winning these awards and we're succeeding, which we're so proud of, especially considering all the progress we've made, you know. This was within the span of one year. And so it's crazy to see how much we've grown and the year isn't even close to over. So it's amazing. And like, doing this don't only shows that we know how to code and that we know how to be engineers, but that we know how to be team members, that we know how to respect each other's opinions. We know how to listen to each other. We know how to present our ideas. And all of these are such important skills that I, in three years in the computer science department, known that I have gained. And so we're looking forward to participating in so many more events. We have the Lockheed Martin Code Quest competition coming up and looking forward to hopefully winning something else. It's amazing. And every day, I learn something new and something that I can apply to a new real-world situation. So I'm very grateful for all that the computer science department has done for me. So thank you so much for your time.
Good evening. Thank you, guys, for having me. I'm Josh Regatto. I'm a teacher here in the CTE department. I'm here to talk about our business program and more specifically DECA. I teach marketing, accounting, and externship here, but I've also run the club DECA for the last two years. It's a co-curricular organization of high school business students with over 200,000 members in all 50 states, including Canada, Mexico, and Germany. DECA is one of the largest high school academic clubs in the world, and DECA helps students develop skills for successful careers, build self-esteem, provides leadership opportunities, and stresses community involvement in service. Students engage in learning about the forces that propel our market-driven system. And the DECA program allows these students and gives them the opportunity to apply their classroom knowledge in realistic competitive scenarios while gaining valuable leadership training. Here at Methuen High School, last year, we had 30 members in the club and we saw a 236% growth this year. We're at 200 members right now. And it's crazy to think about in one year where we're at. But next year, we're losing a good amount of seniors, but we're probably going to grow to 250, 300 next year. So just showing you guys how awesome this club is. We recently just competed in the district conference in Danvers at the Doubletree Hotel for Central Catholic, Andover, North Andover. And we qualified 60 members for the state conference, February 27 to March 1 in the Seaport, Boston. So we go for three days, two nights. It's an amazing conference. CFOs, CEOs, marketing managers, presidents of banks all take work off to come and judge these students and see where their business knowledge is at. So my main goal is here is teaching students what they're going to see post-grad in the business world. And then this program just connects perfectly with aligning that for them. So we've only had one or two students ever place for the national conference in Orlando, Florida. But this year, I think-- conference in Orlando, Florida. But this year, I think it might be our year. So I have four students here, amazing kids. They, they really love this program. So I'm gonna invite them up to talk more about DECA. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dawan Erbaz.
And I'm Desmond Sizmadia.
Firstly, we would love to thank the school committee for their time and also our DECA advisors, Mr. Regatto and Mrs. Thompson, for doing such an amazing job running one of the greatest clubs this school has to offer.
We both have had very different experiences with DECA, but its impact on us has been profound nonetheless. This is my first year in the program and I haven't really taken any business courses at the school either. So I began the year with no real idea of what I would be taking part in, led only to join by the, by the numerous stories of pure elation told by my friends. However, the lessons I learned during my short time with the club are so instrumental that they will help me long after high school.
Being what most in the club would consider a seasoned DECA veteran, I already had the firsthand experience of the lessons previously mentioned, and these played a vital role in shaping the student I became for my upperclassman years and soon my post-secondary education. These lessons, along with the honor of being named president of this amazing club, have given me the skills necessary in being a leader in my community and further sharing the DECA magic with all my peers.
Despite our differences with the program, we have found three main takeaways from participating in the organization, being professionalism, teamwork, and real-world opportunity.
For students with aspirations to pursue a higher, higher education or with entrepreneurial dreams, this club has served as an incredible resource for learning about professionalism and using this newfound knowledge for their own passions. For me, DECA has provided me with the skills necessary to carry myself in a professional manner to help me succeed in connecting with others in any environment, whether it is social, in the classroom, or in the workplace. I attribute many of my achievements to DECA. For example, becoming the youngest intern at PTC at just seventeen years old and helping me network with my fellow colleagues that provided me the opportunity to already have a guaranteed internship placement my junior year of college. These skills rooted in professionalism that I have learned through DECA are vital to any student in finding themselves opportunities for networking and succeeding in the real world.
DECA provides countless opportunities for students looking to collaborate with others in order to find success. Many of the categories students are able to take part in require them to work with their peers and build connections. I truly love this aspect of the club as being in a team role play has allowed me to develop my skills with interpersonal communication while learning how to determine the best course of action in a real business scenario with my partner who essentially becomes a coworker. Together, we were able to win first place at DECA districts and are looking to compete further at DECA states. However, this teamwork extends beyond the actual competition as there is a distinct and passionate culture of unity within the program. The awards night we had after districts was one of the coolest events I've experienced in high school. Everyone truly wanted their peers to succeed and the celebrations were exhibitions of unrelenting joy.
Personally, how DECA has impacted my life the most is with the real-world opportunities given to students. When I entered my junior year of, of high school, I hadn't had a clue of what I truly wanted to study after high school or even any passion to pursue anything as I have not had any indication of what I could find the most success in. It was a confusing time. And for many students also in the same era of their life, they struggle with the same thoughts. When I joined DECA and experienced for myself the many intricate paths and niche opportunities available in the business world, I fell in love with it. And I got the guidance needed to have a grasp on a path I could pursue after high school. This was the case for me and for many others, this may also be the case for them. DECA is a real-world, real-world opportunity for students who may also need guidance in the future endeavors.
Additionally, for students not looking to pursue a degree in business or finance, DECA can still be a great resource. I'm looking to pursue biomedical engineering, so you may not think that the experience I get from the program will help me with my career, but it certainly can be applied. If I was looking to start a business in my selected field or wanted to sell a product that I created, then the education I'm receiving as a result of the club will be a great asset.
Despite all this talk about the future, right now, we are really focused on doing well at the state competition in Boston and hopefully qualifying for the national competition in Orlando. We have high hopes for the continuation of this DECA magic and hopefully many others in the classes beyond ours will experience it as well. Thank you again for having us tonight.
Good evening. I'm Ella Benson, Methuen High's 2024-2025 Vice President of DECA.
And I'm Gracie Neal, first year DECA member. Only being part of this prestigious club for a short time, I have understood how much it has impacted my life both academically and personally. I have joined a community of support and empowerment that no other club could have given me and has taught me so much more on what it means to be a part of this business world as I intend to pursue this career in the near future.
With DECA, I have been able to pave a path for myself as a leader and as an empowered woman. Knowing I will be pursuing a degree in either mass communications or marketing next year, I've taken part in DECA projects the last two years that I have feel have enhanced my knowledge in those sectors of, of business to help me succeed more in the future. I hope to continue my journey as a DECA member collegiately at whichever school I choo-, I choose to attend in the coming months, where I can challenge myself and build top skills to use in any job setting that I aspire to follow.
From deciding between, when deciding between a paper or a role play to competing at a conference, DECA puts our minds at work and brings out the best in our creativity, critical thinking, public speaking, and professionalism. We are pushed by our advisors and peers to think outside the box with our papers, challenge ourselves with our knowledge, try something new, present ourselves as a whole other person that we wouldn't school, and make our speaking more eloquent.
While we have been challenged and pushed academically in DECA, we are also well-known for being engaging and having a huge love in community. With close to 200 members this school year, the leadership team strives to build a family through fun fundraisers such as the 3v3 basketball tournaments and glow-in-the-dark golf, where we have connected with state representatives, participating in yearly community service to help better our surroundings, and supporting community, and creative group activities that better develop connections with our peers. It is this community that we have created and built together that makes my DECA experience memorable and makes me excited and proud to be a part of the thrill and opportunities that DECA provides.
As we begin our journey to states that will be at the end of February and beginning of March, I'm looking forward to the experiences that will be provided from Massachusetts DECA, such as workshops focused on finance, public speaking, writing a better paper, building a resume, et cetera. We will also embark in DECA After Dark activities where we are able to connect with new peers and some of the best schools in the state. It is the most outpouring resources that DECA and our advisors, Mr. Regatto and Mrs. Thompson, have provided us with the support from the school committee and the community surrounding us in hopes to send students to nationals in the late spring.
The DECA experience is like no other. It honors our individual work, creates memories, builds our resumes, and anchors ourselves to work hard now and forever.
That's what I'm trying to decide. I don't think there is. There is not. We want to wish them all the best. In a few weeks, sorry about that. There was one more section. So I just wanted to make sure the students were all finished. It's a phenomenal club. As you can see, we wanted to showcase their work. And, and I think one of the things that has been the most striking for Dr. Golovski and I is the growth of this club. And talking about sending sixty, six-zero, students to our state competition has never happened in my time here in Methuen. So we're really excited for that, excited for these kids, and certainly the advisors supporting them. So thank you for their time and thank you, students, for, for sharing tonight as well.
I'm a big fan of the DECA program. Thank you for a great presentation. At this point, we'll move on to updates from the student representative.
I'll be presenting today on behalf of the student reps from student council as well. First off, the MHS school play, Our Town, performed from Thursday, December 12th to December 14th. The stage door 22 put on four amazing shows of Our Town by Thornton Wilder. And they did a beautiful rendition of the American classic. The basketball Christmas tournament, played by the Methuen varsity basketball, they played three games, beating Newburyport in North Andover and moving on to the championship game against Andover, where they faced a tough loss. Poetry Out Loud, the class competitions were held from January 2nd to 13th. The class competitions are held on a date determined by their teachers. The top scorer was advanced from each block and the semifinal competition is from January 14th and 15th. And they will be competing for the top finishers, which will compete on January 21st for the MHS final competition. And each participant recites two poems. The band concert performed the night of December 19th in the MHS auditorium. The jazz, the jazz band performed before the concert band. The jazz band performed a couple of improvised solos and one soloist in the concert band. A Krispy Kreme fundraiser was also held for the band's Disney trip funding. Director Eric Poster and Brian McOginnall also started what they hoped to be an annual tradition of welcoming back alumni of the band to help close out the show. This year, almost sixty alumni, many of whom had to blow their dust off their instruments dating back to 1992, joined the students for a beautiful rendition of Sleigh Ride. The MHS JRTC program once again placed third in the CMP, which stands for the Civil Marksmanship Program Competition Overall out of ten high schools. Participating in this event highlights from the JV team includes Shilia Davis, who won the marksmanship badge, and Emma Demmers, who won the expert badge, which is the highest badge a JRTC cadet can earn. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you for the update. At this point, we need a motion and a second to approve the Cooperstown-Methuen High School baseball trip in April 2025. Motion from Member Shabili, a second from Member Dezoglio. Discussion. Coach?
Okay, so the Cooperstown trip is going to be on April 25th. It's very, very similar to the exact same trip we did last year. It is being gonna be paid for by the Amelia Family Foundation. So the cost is nothing for, for the, for the school system. So the plan is to leave on Friday, April 25th around 10:00 AM, take a bus out to Cooperstown, enjoy the, the history of the baseball and everything that, that does at Cooperstown in the Hall of Fame. And then they play on Saturday at 10:00 AM. So they play Tewksbury High. So it's a, that's what happens. They bring another team out. You gotta kind of travel with, I'd say, a team that agrees to do that. And so it'd be Tewksbury this year. And they play a game that's officially an MIA game. And they play seven innings, but then they end up playing a couple innings after, after that. So I think they totally play nine innings so that everybody can get a chance to play at Double Day Field and get the experience and different things like that. And then they take a bus home directly from Double Day Field. So they'll be staying over in Cooperstown on Friday. The, the, the whole itinerary is right here. And that will be the itinerary for the most part. Are there any questions?
Any questions from the committee? Vice Chair?
I fully support the trip, but I just have a couple of technical questions, I guess. Do we fund, front the money and then get reimbursed? Or does the, the people who are paying for it fund it first?
The Amelia family will fund it first. If there's, if there's any sort of, it all gets taken by, care of the Amelia family. That's the short answer.
Okay. And my second question is, is this considered a donation and does the school committee need to accept it?
I don't, I don't know that answer.
Sorry. I, is a very good question. I, they did it last year as well. I'd have to look to see if we, I don't think we called it a donation. They sponsored it. But if the school committee wants to approve the donation and the trip tonight to cover both, I would think that that would be okay.
Ultimately, the agenda-
But yeah, great question.
The agenda ultimately refers to the trip overall. So I think we would be covered from an open meeting standpoint if we wanted to have that be the intent perhaps.
Yep. Yep.
I think that's what we, sorry.
Vice Chair, so it's the floor. Do you want to say?
I'm, I'm finished. Thank you.
Member Dezog-
I was, I was gonna say, I think that's what covered us. It was part of the memo last year. We just approved it all together. I think that's how we did it last year. So we were, but if we did it wrong last year, we should fix it.
It's a good question if it's actually considered a donation, if they're sponsoring the trip. So that I don't know. But again, if we want to vote it as it is a donation, so we cover it and not have to come back to the committee, that makes the most sense to me, if it makes the most sense to the chair.
Any other questions? I'm fine with simply having the committee take a yes vote and we'll have that take care of it.
Great.
Any other questions? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Have fun in Cooperstown.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
We're moving on now to public participation. We have five individuals who've signed up and then we'll open it up to the full room if anyone else wants to come forward. We'll begin with Ben Thompson.
Good evening, Mayor Boragar, members of Methuen School Committee and the city of Methuen, residents of Methuen. My name is Ben Thompson. I have worked at the Marsh Grammar School as a program assistant in the Pathways Program since 2022, working in middle school wards of autism. During my workday, I support students as they get on off their buses, assist them in their classroom, and, and call me during specials and support them at lunch and recess. Program assistants are the backbone of special education and as any said, if you ask any special education teacher, they couldn't do our job without us. Well, my job is very challenging. It has been very rewarding, one of my favorite experiences in my life. It has allowed me to grow as an educator alongside my students. Although I'm not originally from Methuen, I've come to be, I feel like I've been raised by the city and I've come home to love it. However, I am very concerned about the high staff turnover due to low wages Methuen compares to other communities. In fact, Methuen is the lowest-paying district in the Merrick Valley. On average, teachers earn significantly less here than they would in comparable districts, including gateway cities. Currently, program assistants make just twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars a year, which is a poverty wage. As a result, the school year restarted with a record sixty-two unfilled positions of program assistants, as program assistants are leaving to pursue more positions in other cities. This is my fourth year working in Methuen, and every year I've worked with a different teacher. Every program assistant I've worked has left as well, except for one who went to a different program. This has left me as the most experienced program assistant in my classroom. There are students that are noticing and they're asking why so many teachers and staff are leaving. But giving them a true, straight answer is difficult. But the truth is simple. Methuen does not offer competitive pay. The district's current contract providers for teachers and program assistants too little will do little to address this crisis. For teachers, the current proposed twelve percent increase over four years with additional salary increases for veteran teachers will continually limit the level of pay scales in neighboring communities and risk creating division between younger and veteran teachers. As for program assistants, the current proposal only increased the top step to thirty-four thousand dollars a year. This is still a poverty range and far below the city's median income in forty-nine thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars a year. More importantly, neighboring districts such as Lawrence, Greater Lawrence, and Andover currently offer starting salaries near or above forty thousand dollars, making it clear why Methuen struggles to attract and retain staff. It is critical to remember that teachers' working conditions are students' learning conditions. High staff turnover leads to frustration, decreased morale, and disruptions in student learning. Building relationships with students takes time. And this is, and this is gets harder and harder as turnover persists. To ensure Methuen Public Schools can attract and retain talented educators, the Methuen School Committee needs to negotiate with the teachers a fair contract that offers competitive and living, livable wages for all members. Our students deserve the civility and excellence of having dedicated and experienced staff. Our time is now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Kate Capadagli. Apologies if I mispronounced your last name.
I think you did all right. Thank you. Good evening, school command, school committee members. My name is Kate Capadagli and I've had the privilege of being an educator here in Methuen for fifteen years. However, tonight, sorry. Okay. However, tonight, I stand before you, not just as a teacher, but as a frustrated resident and a disheartened and angry mother. Before I begin, I do want to thank you for your efforts this past month in cleaning our buildings and aggressively tackling these unsanitary issues. Before I begin, I do want to thank you for your efforts this past month in cleaning our buildings and aggressively tackling these unsanitary issues. I want to thank all of our amazing custodians, who with their little manpower they have, work tires- tirelessly to clean our buildings. I want to make it very clear that in no way do I blame them or hold them accountable for these preventable, unsanitary conditions. They do their best every day, and I don't expect them to be scrubbing mold or cleaning dead mice out of air vents. I want to take a moment to address the conscious choices and decisions made by you, the school committee, as well as our mayor and city council that have led us to this place. As you're all well aware, our school system has made national news, not just for, not just for accomplishments or accolades, but for the deplorable conditions that you have allowed our children to be educated in. The situation that you find yourselves in today is not a result of unforeseen circumstances. It is the outcome of longstanding neglect by our city leaders, you included. I know you are all looking for accountability, and I hold each and every one of you accountable. I don't want to hear excuses about you not knowing or putting the blame on custodians, teachers, and administrators. We are not your scapegoat. You are the school committee, the governing body of our school district. This is happening under your leadership and oversight. Problems with mice, mold, and air quality have been a concern for many years. Problems which may have been, which many have been vocal about, this is no secret. As the school committee, all of you have to have been aware of these issues, but only now have they become a priority. If you claim to be unaware, then that brings up an entirely different concern about your duty and obligation to your constituents and calls into question your transparency and dedication. To the extent of how bad you understood it to be remains to be determined. You have admitted to be finding out about these issues in September, but it was four months after the fact, after it was all over the evening news that it became top priority. Why was this not a priority in September? Why has this not been any kind of priority for the many years it has been going on? It is heartbreaking and absolutely infuriating to feel that the only time you open your ears and your eyes is when Fox twenty-five news is on your doorstep. Is that what it takes to be heard? Is that what it takes for our schools and our children to be a priority? As a teacher, these issues go much deeper than wearing red and fighting for a fair contract. You have teachers leaving in droves, no paraprofessionals, and now infestations. The biggest and most important question is, what are you going to do about it? This is not a legislative, legislative issue. This is not a brandy issue. This is not a custodian or teacher issue. This is an issue of neglect and putting our schools on the back burner. If this were not front page of the news, would it continue to just be business as usual? As you should be aware, Methuen is doing the bare minimum required by the state to fund and support our schools. For this, I also hold the city council responsible for the years of neglecting our schools in this way and for allowing our children and the importance of their education to be on the back burner. Schools are critical to the well-being and success of our future generations, and where local government does not prioritize education, it can create long-term consequences. We are experiencing these consequences. Consequences from years of cutting corners, cutting budgets, and cutting staff. Years of minimal funding with scraps left over after other departments are taken care of. I often see social media posts from members of both committees sharing their good deeds and proud accomplishments. However, none of that matters if your schools have no teachers, no paras, and students are learning in mice and mold-infested buildings. This is shameful. So my most, my most important question is, what are you going to do? What are you going to do to ensure our schools and our children will be properly cared for? What are you going to do to prevent the loss of great teachers and ensure the safety and health of our students and staff going forward? I understand that there will be a school audit, which I welcome, but whatever comes of it, I hope you take it seriously and you are ready to fulfill your obligations as we put the, as well as put the pressure on our city council and mayor for them to fulfill theirs. As someone who has dedicated years to educating the children of this community and being a resident and mother, I can no longer stand by and watch this injustice continue. I look to you for answers and a plan going forward. I am asking for your commitment to ensure transparency, communication, and support. Our children deserve better. They deserve schools that are safe, clean, and conducive to learning. I urge you to take responsibility for the conditions that you have been allowed to fester, and I look forward to your commitment to prioritize our children and make real, lasting change. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Sarah Cordero.
Good evening, Methuen Public Schools Board members. My name is Sarah Cordero. Not only am I a resident of Methuen, but I am also a multilingual learner teacher in Methuen Public Schools. My two children attend Marsh Grammar School, and my stepson graduated from Methuen High School in twenty twenty-one. I started teaching in twenty twelve in Lawrence Public Schools. It was in Lawrence that I fell in love with teaching, practiced a teacher's stare, and it was solidified that children come to school for so much more than lessons on math and reading. In twenty fifteen, my husband and I moved from Lawrence to Methuen. We were confident in our move, knowing we would be living in a district that would provide a learning environment in which our children would not only learn and grow, but thrive. We were excited to see what the Ranger Nation was all about. It was in that same year that I made the difficult decision to leave Lawrence, a district that gave so much to my life professionally and personally, for Methuen. I was committed to being part of the educator community that I felt so confident about putting my own children through, and what better way to do that than to teach at a Methuen Public School? I began teaching at CGS in twenty fifteen, but after two years at CGS, I found myself being called back to teach in Lawrence. In twenty seventeen, I returned to my Lawrence students, and I stayed as a Lawrence Public Schools employee until twenty twenty-two. When an opening became available in twenty twenty-two for a multilingual learner teacher at the Marsh Grammar School, it felt like fate. You see, we had moved from the east side to the west side and into the Marsh District just the year before in twenty twenty-one. The idea of working in the same building that my own children would spend most of their days in for nine years was extremely appealing to me. Throughout my teaching career, and most recently at the Marsh, I have gotten to know educators who truly do the most for their students. Educators who attend evening and weekend games or performances. Educators who buy gifts for students who would otherwise go without. Educators who know exactly which family member is sick and regularly ask their student for updates. Educators who make home visits to show students and families that they care. Educators who maintain contact with students who have long left their classroom walls. Educators who make phone calls well after their contracted hours just to make sure a student is okay. Educators who learn phrases in unfamiliar languages just to see a student smile. These educators know the minutia that is foundational to their students' worlds. This is exactly what makes the Ranger Nation so great. My mornings, afternoons, weekends, and vacations have been and continue to be filled with names like Mrs. Bruder, Mrs. Dubraki, Mrs. Power, Mrs. Cormier, Ms. Gangi, Mrs. Lavin, Mrs. Windsor, Mrs. Kelly, Mrs. Kelvasa, Mr. Pendleton, Mrs. Slaton, Mrs. Smutney, Mrs. Gagnon, Ms. Cashman, Mrs. Jeffrey, Mrs. Palermo, Mrs. Connolly, Mrs. Finch, Mrs. Williams, Mrs. Govan, and Ms. Laurie, just to name a few. These names don't work in eight to three. These names infiltrate our car, our home, and our family dinners. These names are often the words that fill in the blanks to the requests of mommy, take a picture and send it to Ms. or mommy, can you tell Mr. about, or I learned that from Mrs. Duh. Luckily for me, these names also have faces. These names belong to teachers who have made a significant impact on my children's lives. I work alongside these names, these educators. They are my colleagues. I urge the board members to remember these names as you hear your own versions of these names while discussing our contract negotiations. Remember them at your own dinner table, in your own car, at your next family gathering. Our Methuen Public School teachers deserve the best. The time is now. No more business as usual. Thank you.
Thank you. Kara Black. And Sue.
Sue Pierce is joining me, if that's okay. Our co-president of our union with us. Thank you tonight. Also, we want to just extend that there has been some cooperative and collaborative conversations going on between the union and the school committee about a number of issues. So we're very excited about the collaboration piece, but we're working to swiftly get the contract done and fund the schools as we need that. The high-needs population dictates a lot of this budget, as well as we are the largest city department in the city by over five hundred. The staffing and the way is viewed of our budget, especially with the budgets coming up, cannot be viewed as we need to cut or we're going to be fiscally responsible like a business. We're not a business. We're a school that services seven thousand children, and a lot of the population has high needs and difficult demographics that other sys- systems do not have. You cannot solely look at a budget based on numbers of students or just of staff, or just because the city, we are the biggest. We need to be funded based upon what the needs are and how do we retain and keep our staff. A program assistant should not be on mass health because they cannot afford the city's health insurance. A teacher should not be working three jobs and still trying to correct papers at midnight because they are not being funded. We are the lowest paid in the Merrimack Valley, and our contracts deserve to be funded, not based on what you think is fiscally responsible, but the city narrative needs to change. We've had very productive conversations. We are hoping that the swift action that you are taking for the schools will translate into our contract negotiations, and we appreciate your time.
Thank you. Nicole Pereira.
Hi, everyone. Um, I'm Nicole Pereira. I'm a mom of three boys, attending the Marsh Grammar School and the current president of the Methuen CPAC. Um, I just wanted to thank the mayor and superintendent for inviting the state to conduct a visual walkthrough of the Marsh Grammar School, in addition to conducting indoor air quality testing. I encourage staff and parents to read this report. It can be found on the methuen.gov's website. Um, the report highlights several areas of concern that I do feel like need to be addressed in order to ensure a safe and healthy learning environment for our students and staff. Um, some of these key issues identified included deactivated ventilation systems. Several of the supply and exhaust components of our mechanical ventilation systems were found to either be deactivated or non-functional. So I, I think it would just be, um, great for us to know whether those were determined to be deactivated or non-functional. Of course, the aging infrastructure, many building components, particularly in the nineteen sixty-nine section, have surpassed their service life in our need of replacement. This includes unit ventilators that are essential to maintaining fresh air circulation in classrooms, as well as windows. Potential for mold growth, areas of visible water damage and mold growth were noted, and I would like to see a clear plan to address the mold that was discovered. And then just overall general maintenance issues, accumulations of dust and debris in vents and carpeting that is beyond its service life can contribute to poor air quality. Until permanent carpets can be removed, it's essential to vacuum regularly with a vacuum cleaner featuring a HEPA filter. I'm just curious if we have a vacuum that has a HEPA filter on it? Awesome. I love that. Great. Um, are we using them on the vacuums regularly? Awesome. Um, and then for areas that experience heavy foot traffic or are heavily soiled, the state recommends cleaning them annually or semi-annually, and I, and I know that I had presented that already before, just having a protocol for the rugs that are in the classroom that are used daily that obviously have spills, um, you know, accidents and all that, those, I would just like to see a plan to have those maintained even just yearly. Um, given these finally, findings, I would like to ask the school committee what the plans are in place to address these concerns. Specifically, how does the district intend to implement the recommendations provided in the report? I know that some things obviously take time and substantial money, um, but nonetheless, they still do need to have a plan. And I think families are just truly interested in understanding not just the current actions being taken, but also how we can ensure that we are sustaining the improvements moving forward. Um, so I just think that like if we could have a clear plan for people to access on the methuen.gov website, on the Methuen Public Schools website, that highlight, you know, during this break, this is happening at this school, um, and, you know, going over the plans for the capital improvement and how, what that looks like. I know that all of that information can be found somewhere on the internet, but I think having it in a central place like that, um, site that the mayor set up is great, I think, for people, the most people being able to access information efficiently. Um, and then lastly, I'd just like to say in terms of the Methuen CPAC, um, we would like to take on a more active role, um, as outlined in the DESI PAC guidelines in advising our school committee on education and safety of students with disabilities. Um, we'd like that by re- meeting regularly with school officials, we can collaboratively contribute to the planning, development, and evaluation of special education programs, fostering a supportive environment for all learners. I'm not sure how that looks, um, with all of you and, and what you guys envision that looking like, but I just wanted to throw that out into all of your ears, um, that that is something that we're looking to, to do essentially is pushing in. Um, we're doing that with our PTOs and working as liaisons with our PTOs, and so that, this is just another avenue where we would like to be able to push in and advise. Um, our first CPAC meeting again, um, is going to be on January twenty-third at six o'clock PM at the Nevins Library. This is open to all parents of children on an IEP or five oh four plan being serviced through Methuen Public Schools and all interested parties, including teachers, school committee members, school officials, as well as any interested community members. If you guys have any questions at all, please reach out to methuencpac@gmail.com. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who didn't sign up who would like to speak? If not, then I'll close public participation. Uh, if you can't make the meeting in person for public participation, you can send an email to martha sirrois@masirois@methuen.k12.ma.us before three PM on the day of the school committee meeting. Uh, at this point, I know there might be some folks who want to leave the room. I'd like to entertain perhaps a motion to recess for five minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Member Shabilius, second from the vice chair. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We'll recess briefly for five minutes. We'll recess briefly for five minutes. The time is 7:07 PM. We're returning from a five-minute recess. I'll ask the secretary to call the roll upon our return from the recess.
Member DiZoglio? Member Donovan?
Here.
Member Keegan?
Here.
Member Maxwell?
Here.
Member Shabelia?
Here.
Member Willett?
Yep.
Mayor Boran?
Here. All right, at this point, we need a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the December 9, 2024 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Member Shabelia, second from the vice chair. Discussion? There's no discussion. We'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We need a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the Facilities Building Subcommittee from December 18, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Member Shabelia, second from the vice chair. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on now to staff reports. First, we have updates from the superintendent and assistant superintendents. At this point, we need, I'm sorry, do we have any updates? That's next on the agenda?
Yes. We do have updates for you tonight. We have Dr. Galavsky, I'm going to turn it over to her. There should be two memos in your packet, one regarding the CTE program advisory committees that we actually need your approval for, which she'll go over, and then she also has a school library updates, which was a request per member Willett, but also we're halfway through the year, so we want to tell you where we are with our library revival. That's good. I like that one.
Okay, thank you. So the first, the CTE program advisory committees, this is a requirement of Chapter 74 programs that there's a committee to advise us as educators and also interact with students and to help make sure that we're heading in the right direction and actually preparing students for the skills they'll need upon entering the workforce. So it helps us stay current. It's also a really nice way for kids to interact with community members, to see themselves in the roles of the future. So I'll call Ms. Maureen Malanson up one more time. A busy night for her as she facilitates the PACs, in case you happen to have any questions. Another requirement of the PAC is that you, as a body, approve the people that serve on the program advisory councils. So they've had a meeting already. Everyone listed has expressed interest in serving, and the next step is that there'll be a person from each of these separate program committees who will volunteer to serve on the general PAC, and that they'll need to schedule a meeting with you, the school committee, for a more information-sharing Q&amp;A type of session. So Ms. Malanson, did I miss anything?
Just to explain a little bit about what it is, we invite members from our business, industry, partners. We also invite members from higher education. We have parents and students who all join this committee, and the purpose really, as stated, is to look over the curriculum, see what we do, see what the current trends are in the job market, see what skills people that are entering the market and entering higher education maybe need to develop a little more. We work that back into our curriculum. So the people that are on this list here have all, as you said, volunteered to come on. They've given us lots of feedback in our first meeting. We had a lot of feedback based on programs that we could use in our disciplines that would increase our skills. We also looked at those power skills that Navy worked on, specifically interpersonal skills, emotional intelligence, teamwork, collaboration. And they also provide a lot of opportunity for our students to do competitions, to find extranormative opportunities, to find job opportunities, and then speaking engagements where members of the community, members from higher education, come and speak to our students about the career path that they're involved in. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about what the PACs are, what we do. So, any questions?
Any questions in the committee?
And just one more note, we do have a radio and TV broadcasting PAC. That is not a current Chapter 74-approved program, but we are in the application process for it to become one, so we're ahead of the game in that area.
Member Willett?
It was an excellent presentation, so I just wanted to add that beyond the scope of people receiving passing grades for the AP courses, I know there's a movement afoot to be able to secure credit from colleges while you're still in high school. Is that something that we have synergy with this program to gain credits at community colleges and public schools going forward? Or currently, do we have that mechanism beyond, obviously, the scope of AP credit for kids? Is that something you want to enlighten us as a committee? I would appreciate the feedback, just to learn more.
Perfect timing. So we've been in discussion with Northern Essex and also Middlesex about articulation agreements, where they match our curriculum against theirs and say that they're reciprocal and that students would have a pathway that we could advertise as already having earned credits at a university or college beyond. Some are very clearly outlined within the state guidelines, for instance, the early childhood education, and some other programs such as radio and TV broadcasting, we know aligns really nicely with what Middlesex offers, mostly because the department chair is on our PAC and pointed that out, so that would be another networking opportunity. So there'll just need to be some documenting of that agreement. But yes, and we're using that to help advertise the opportunity to students, particularly even incoming middle school students who plan to attend the high school, as an opportunity for them to get involved in CTE.
Because I see it like twofold. It keeps us honest in terms of our standards, because if we're aligned with community colleges and public schools, and also because of the framework we have right now of tuition-free opportunities at the community colleges and the public schools, I think it's a strong synergy beyond just liberal arts. And again, I think business, marketing, biotechnology, early childhood, I think a lot of that's the future, and I appreciate that, and just moving in that direction. If we have further updates down the line, or invitations, or even have outside people come and speak to us, I would love to have that vantage point of like either the community colleges or the experts from outside fields, and just explain how it benefits them, because right now, there's a huge outcry for skills in certain fields, and I think this is a perfect alignment. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the committee? If not, that'll do it. Thank you.
Excuse me, mayor, we just need a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Just a sec. That was just the update.
Yep, we do need a vote for a motion and a second.
So this is regarding the approval of the advisory committees for the CTE program?
Yeah.
Okay, so we need a...
So moved. Second.
Motion from Member Willett, second from Member Shabelia. Discussion?
DiZoglio.
I'm sorry. Member DiZoglio. You seconded, yes.
Yeah, I see.
Any discussion?
Yeah.
Now we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. At this point, we'll move on to the update regarding the school libraries.
Okay, thank you. So as you'll see in your packet, there's a memo that outlines the many steps of the project, and I hope to inform you as to where we are now. So at this point, in every grammar school, we've gone through the design process of what we hope the library to eventually look like in terms of layout. In every space, we heard loud and clear from the principals and also from our vantage point, that it was important to preserve open space, such as in this media center, areas to collaborate for students, to hold meetings, professional development opportunities, while also maximizing storage for books. So we purchased and installed wall shelving, which is the one-sided shelving. There's some two-faced or double-sided shelving that's freestanding in every school as well. And the bulk of the work was the weeding process, and we collaborated with Follett. They flew out a librarian. They thought they could do it with three, and some staffers they provided. We had some awesome volunteers, some parent volunteers, some community volunteers who also joined to help in the effort. And upon working through our library collections that hadn't been touched in many, many years, they became, Follett being they, became overwhelmed and flew out another librarian and more staffers. So it took a lot to get through that collection and to get the collection to a place where we feel like it's updated, it's relevant, there's texts that are meaningful for kids. Every school received more than 2,000 new books that are all Follett permabound, so with that binding, it's guaranteed for life, so if it were to become damaged, we just let Follett know and they send us a new one. And we're able to inventory the entire collection, so we see where our holes are, where we need to build in the future. And so that puts us above 11,000 books at each school. The high school currently, just because we're in the space and you get a visual, is about 14,000. So now that Follett has come and gone, and it was really a whirlwind of weeding, I wanted to be sure that what we weeded should have been weeded. So we had another team that was consistent, that went from school to school to get their hands on every single book again, to make sure that it was an appropriate weed and that we weren't moving too quickly. And for the most part, we found that we were right on the money the first time around, although we were able to save some additional books. And I would like to give a mention to Vanessa Guthrie, who's the media center specialist at the high school. She's really been helping with the process. So where we are now is that with the weeded books, once they've been double-checked, all staff will be offered the opportunity to grab from the piles if they wish to add to their classroom collections. We'll also offer the opportunity to students and families. And for the books that aren't selected or chosen, we'll be able to donate those. And we need to identify the furniture and the type that needs to be purchased, what we can afford. Ms. Guthrie from the high school is helping us with decor and signage and displays, and we also purchased the materials necessary for self-checkout stations at each school, so the student will be able to type in their ID number, or the teacher will be able to help them, and then they just scan their book and they're on their way. Without a specialist in each school, we think that might be the most feasible way to get through the year with the assistance of some volunteers to help us re-shelve and keep the collection organized, and also to make it visually appealing with more displays. So that's where we're looking to go now. There's been a lot of work that's gone into it, so thank you to everyone who's been involved. And we know kids are eager to get their hands on some books, and we're eager to have them do so as well. There's also a few pictures in there, just so you can see the scope of the job and the personalization that went through the review of every single text.
Do we have any questions, comments in the committee?
I'll defer to them for...
Vice chair?
Probably a silly question, but in the elementary schools, are the books off the floor so that the mice can't get to them?
The shelving is raised, much like it is here, so there's nothing that's flat on the floor. You might see when you travel around schools, we did leave some shelves at the very top open, and that's purposeful for display of books, but we're maximizing the space, we're trying to fill what we have in terms of shelving.
Member Donovan?
Dr. Galavsky, can you fill us in a little on where these volunteers may be coming from? Because obviously, it's going to be key jobs to maintain the libraries, make them look good and accessible. So can you give us a little idea?
Yes. I'm concerned with getting volunteers with regularity to make sure that we have a schedule of when students check out books and return them, who's putting them back in the right spot and whatnot. We had asked the city for some senior volunteers, if you remember that program, that was advertised before, and so I think we were waiting to see if anyone had selected us, because they can select their site. And also, I don't know that that would take us throughout the year, but it would be helpful. So that's one plan we have. Another is the principals put in their newsletters that we are looking for volunteers, and I know several have had some parents who have reached out with days or hours they'd be willing to give. And then we're also looking at the National Junior Honor Society we've talked about, maybe biweekly, those students could cycle through and help recatalog, organize the books. Ms. Guthrie's also been really kind and offering to make videos and training videos for the new volunteers that come on to catch everybody up, because we expect there'll be a lot of hands.
Thank you.
Member Willett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I really appreciate the report. And without highlighting the specific school, I had concerns, but I think we're moving in the right direction. Now, what is the timetable and estimate of the Step 6 of the completion date? Are we looking at the remainder of the school year? Are we pretty close to that Step 6?
We're close. So two schools have been fully double-checked in the weeding, which would put us toward the end of Step 5. The third school is almost finished, and then we'll start at that last school next week. So I'd say by February, we should be having kids check out books. The furniture may be happening concurrently as we establish where that money's coming from for the furniture and how much we need. That's a real variation between schools. For instance, a CGS, although I think it's the original furniture from the media center, it's pretty solid, and it's their tables. And there's other spots where we need to purchase more. So we'll have to figure that part out, but we'll be able to have students check out books, certainly February.
So in terms of our equity mission statement, we don't have really any laggards. We're pretty much uniformity amongst the schools. Okay.
Yes, we prioritize that.
Okay. And then also, I don't know if you emphasized it. I apologize if you did already. But people have to realize at home that this is a project that was 15 years in waiting to accomplish. We have not done this in 15 years of weeding through the books, purchasing new books, assessing our libraries, encouraging volunteers. So it becomes like a Herculean task. Now, in terms of the Nevins Library, I know we mentioned during prior meetings their involvement. I don't know if you want to go into a little bit of detail on that, their involvement of recommendations, review, coming on site. Because we do a municipal chargeback, I believe, still in partnership with the Nevins Library, as far as I know. Is that something that, you know, we don't do the municipal chargeback anymore? Okay. With the Nevins Library, we don't do that anymore. Okay, good. Okay. So, okay. All right. So in terms of what you will need for furniture within the libraries, I believe that's something that is an immediacy to that, but also cataloging what will need to be removed. And I read in Methuen Life in terms of the donation from the First Church that was great for the students. And I don't know if we're doing any outreach to maybe local businesses and nonprofits and churches in terms of matching up students with books or sending out a letter. I know there's different businesses that do a lot of charity work. And I'm sure churches and nonprofits would also be part of that mission if we just do an introductory letter. But I think we're moving in the right direction, and I appreciate that. And then if we're not doing the municipal chargeback with the Nevins anymore, I think that's kind of a good thing in that we're putting the money into our libraries. And I know working with the mayor, the education mayor, I know there'll be certain items that he'll have to approach the council in terms of replacement of furniture and shelving. So I think, again, overall, we're moving in that right direction. And I appreciate the report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Member Shabili?
Over the break, I was at the marsh. And in the media center, there are the boxes of what I'm assuming are the weeds. I know that you said that your timeline is to have kids checking out in February. What do you think the timeline is for kind of your donation collection passing out, getting all the extra weeds out of the building?
The marsh is actually, they're at 75% completion of the double-check of the weeds. So they started, they got to the marsh toward the end of last week. So that's almost done. And then we can open for teachers to come and take. And then we'll go through with the family and the student offerings. The group that we've used before, they pick up books. It's a Boston-based group. And they give about maybe a week, they need a week lead time to come with their truck and to take away at the very last step. So I'm not worried about that. There were a lot of boxes at the marsh, which is why I wanted to be sure we double-checked.
Pretty big pile.
Right, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the committee? If not, we'll move on to the student services report.
Good evening. I'd just like to highlight and congratulate Tayab for his selection as student representative on the Safe and Supportive Schools Commission. So just wanted an opportunity to highlight that tonight and then open it up if there's any other questions about the memo tonight.
Member Willett?
Thank you. In terms of the non-resident approved this day for the current year, is that in relation to graduation?
Correct.
Okay. And how is the new system in terms of the new form and reviewing the real estate transactions and more involvement with the police of doing checks? How is that going? Is that seen to be an improvement?
So the form has definitely been very helpful in getting information to us. The enrollment specialists have done a great job checking any resource that we have available to us and collaborating with any agency while we go through residency investigations. We're now gearing up for our grade level checks. So in the coming months, you'll be getting updates. We're going to be doing two schools at a time.
Okay. And we've had, was it a five person? Since, it was 15 before, now it's 20 so far?
So there was only five from the previous month that we were still processing.
Okay. All right. And then this might be a question for the mayor in terms of the shelter. Has the governor visited with her team of inspectors to the shelter yet?
No.
Okay. So no visit to the shelter that we have major concerns with. And we've had no additional funding to help us with that shelter to the school system.
Not yet, but I have had city inspectors visiting, but not from the state at this point. But I will point out that in conversations with the Healy administration, they are winding down use of hotels in the Commonwealth as shelters altogether. And at this point, I think I indicated perhaps back in November, December, my advocacy for the Days Inn. And that hotels use as a shelter to be winded down in the initial phases of their plan, simply because we were one of the first to be opened. And at this point, is what I am pushing for in terms of advocacy at the state level.
Yeah. Because I think it's an abomination over there, the reports I'm receiving. And also in terms of we're talking about fairness across communities. And again, we will educate the children. That is my priority. In terms of fairness, we are being victimized as a community. And we have deficit spending with the illegal alien situation. And so I know you're on top of it, Mr. Mayor. I know you reflected it to the governor in conversations. But I just don't think as a gateway community that we should be hosting that many families and not receiving any assistance. And it's an abomination at that place, the reports I'm receiving. But other than that, I appreciate the report to the committee. Thank you.
Member Shabili?
Looking at the three bullets under grants first, I guess my ask would be, I mean, these are all well-written, but they're very much written in your corporate email-type manner, where there's nothing in here for specifics. It feels to me when I read these like I'm at work and there's just a lot of buzzwords. And I mean, I get it, that's kind of the world we live in. But also, I think people want to actually understand what's going on. Like, for example, in that first bullet, me reading that, the first thought that came to my mind was what you were trying to say is we'd be renewing cartwheel. And I mean, that's well and good and all. It's just, I feel like I had to like dig to figure out what that actually meant. So I guess my ask going forward is if we could just be more specific with what we're saying instead of the, I don't know, the corporate language, bureaucratic language stuff. Going past that in the third bullet, the other two tell us how much the grants were. The third bullet doesn't? So in my mind, I automatically go to those are million-dollar grants, which I know they aren't. But, but it just, it stands out as a missing bullet point. In the School Health Services section, it says that the part-time director of health services was removed and you added the two stipended nursing roles. I'm going to assume that these weren't a one-to-one switch. Would that be an accurate assumption?
Yep. So we were struggling because the part-time position that we thought was going to help us get through this year was from a staff member who's not currently here in Methuen and so only available after hours, right? So that person was doing our paperwork with the state, our state reporting and communicating with our nurses or families as needed, but after hours for non-urgent situations. That's sort of how we set it up. It was brought to our attention from the group that Ms. Bozek and I met with the nurses group, that that was just, it was a struggle. They needed something more tangible during the day to help them work through situations within and among themselves and also with families. And so we came to a mutual agreement with the union that we would sort of cease that director position, take those funds. And the union did agree to split two stipended positions for current nurses in our union. So those positions right now, and divided in a way that they can do their full-time jobs as nurses, right? We really, I thought, I think we did a good job working closely with the nurses' union to really figure out what they need to get us through this year. But with real clarity that it's very hard to function without a director.
With that being said, do we now have two full-time, present, accounted-for-in-the-building nurses in each building?
So close.
We are so close.
How close is so close? Where are we at?
We are working, we are finalizing the final position in one of the buildings.
Awesome. So these positions that are stipended, they are, they're doing that backend work that was being done by that part-end person?
Yeah.
Part-time?
And the work that Ms. Bozek was taking over. So that, in combination with the Director of Special Education leaving, we had to spend some time really figuring out time and tasks. And that's what we did with the nursing position with special education and that FRC, that's the other piece that she supervises. So again, we just, we put all the pieces in place that we feel were the priorities and worked with the unions. And we do have two staff members who applied for both of these. So each of them, you know, are compartmentalizing the tasks. They're still working with Gina, but we've taken those, the day-to-day subbing, the, you know, off of Ms. Bozek's plate. And now they have a leader who, if there's a problem with a parent, if there's a problem with meds, if they're having trouble getting doctor's notifications, they have someone right here, right now, that they can pick up the phone and dial and call. So we put that in place upon our return in January. And we hope to have some success with that to get us through the rest of the year.
Awesome. Two questions on the McKinney-Vento. I was brought to my attention the other day by Member Keegan that we, let's call it rideshare with special ed busing. Do we do the same thing here to try to mitigate the cost of the busing? Like, say, for example?
Yep, yes.
We do?
Yes.
Wherever we can, we split the cost or we put kids from different districts on the bus and share the cost?
Okay. Awesome. I was hoping we weren't so that we could save more, but you know. And then into the residency. So I'm coming into 2025 with a perspective across the board of I want things to mean something when we do them. And the residency chart is nice. And I understand the need despite the contention that may be around it. But it doesn't tell me what the impact is on the district. So of these 20 kids that have withdrawn from the district, how many of them were counted in last year's October numbers that we received state funding for? How, now, if we then remove that kid from the district and we're being paid for them, do we now have to send that money?
No.
We don't?
Never. Because for the 20 kids that we've gotten out, I've probably quadrupled that in the amount of kids I've received in since October 1st and have not gotten money for.
Okay.
That's how the state works. We don't pay money back and forth. So if kids have withdrawn after October 4th, I mean, October 1st, they've withdrawn. Kids who are enrolling now, I mean, we get a report every Monday morning on the kids that are enrolling. It doesn't stop, right? So we've gotten far more kids enrolling than we have withdrawn. So, and the state just assumes next October 1st, the kids that are here and stay get picked up on that October 1st enrollment. That's, it's never worked any other way since I've been in this business. So, which is why there's some, I will say, I know that some people have asked the sort of, why are we allowing non-residents to stay? When there's a graduation situation, eighth grade, 12th grade, the school committee in the past has given me that the money, as long as it's in Massachusetts, right? It's about the kid at this point, not about, we don't provide transportation or anything like that because we can't. But if we're talking about a senior that wants to graduate with their peers, I'm just not in the position that I would say no. So that has been allowed. Yeah, so that's the only time when we would have somebody who's not living in Methuen if they have asked or they're living in a close enough town that they want to finish their year with their peers.
So it's my...
It makes sense to us financially not to.
My thought process when reviewing this was, I have this chart every two weeks, and I'm not sure what to do with it.
Yeah, it was basically asked for us to provide you for sheer information of how many, how many at the time. If there's something more that you want, that's at the will of the committee to let us know what you, what other information will help us with some outcome? You know, not maybe, I get it, because information, just to have information, but how helpful is it?
Yeah, I guess that can be an ongoing conversation. I would like it to be worth the effort of putting it together. And right now, I don't necessarily feel that it is.
Understood.
So, and if we deem it not worth the effort, then why are we doing it? Maybe I'm alone in that, but that's all good. Thank you.
Student representative?
Going back to the money towards the cartwheel and the SEL, there's a section at the bottom that says it will also help fund the MHPSEC. I was wondering if there is an amount that was allocating towards that group or is it still being decided?
Well, ask Mr. Crocker. More details. We got it.
We have Member Maxwell and then Member Dzoglio.
So I mean, I was just wondering what the use to advanced counseling staff use was evidence-based mental health services? I guess that's cartwheel. I didn't realize.
I made assumptions.
Yeah, so I guess I would be interested in knowing what that is. What is the evidence-based mental health services? And then the CPS coaches in the second bullet? Are those going to be at each school? Like, what is that?
So we currently are looking for about a dozen coaches at this point throughout the district. And there will be coaches assigned to each school. So we will, it might not be an even spread of numbers of coaches in each school, but we're looking at having at least one or two coaches in each school at this point, yes.
What exactly will they be doing?
So there, so we've done all this for the course of three years to have a trainer-of-trainers program so that they have gone through, I want to say three, are we at level three? So three levels of training to then become trainers for teachers' professional development. That is the way that the collaborative problem-solving implementation plan goes. It is, especially in a large district like ours, it's hard for the professional group to come and do small group implementation and training. So they have recommended since the onset of us working with them that we go through a pretty strict training process to train the trainers. So we have our own trainers that can then work with grade levels, different schools. And we have enough people to deploy for smaller groups on those professional days.
Do we already have those, that staff? Or are you hiring more, like, are teachers going to assume that?
Yeah, these are current staff members who have been interested and trained all along the way.
Gotcha.
And a variety of types of staff members as well. So we have some guidance, we have some teachers, we have some administrators. It's a variety of staff that have gone through the process to this level.
Okay. And what about the top one? Is that cartwheel? Is that what we're talking about?
The top bullet?
Yeah.
I'll have to get more specifics.
We're going to get some more information from you. That was the one that Member Shabili mentioned. We'll get some detail for you, a little more breakdown.
Member Dzoglio?
Yeah, just to follow up with Member Shabili is a statement about residency. The reason why we put it together was because at the time, especially when I first got on and when Mr. Willett, Member Willett, back in his day, residency is a big issue with residents through the whole city. They want to know where their tax pay is going. So we set that block up so when people do tend to want to look at our agenda... our agenda, they saw what we were doing actively moving with showing residency. So I, I still think it still does some use because we know that we're actively moving forward and continuously doing our checks where we, when I got on, it was kind of in this limbo type thing where we didn't have the staffing or we did have staffing, but we didn't know where the paperwork was going or it was, it was kind of why we formed that subcommittee. We were fixing what the residency area was doing and providing that information. So then we knew if it was working. That, that, that's why. And it was a simple boxes, like four or five boxes, as you see. But I, that's why I wanted to form maybe the subcommittee for a small portion to see what we could do to advance that too. So maybe in the future, that could be at the subcommittee idea of moving forward, how to advance it.
Any other questions from the committee? Vice Chair?
Um, so going off of something that Member Willett said, um, if they were to close the Days Inn, all of those students are Methuen Public School students, and if they get moved to another community, is it going to increase our transportation costs to bus these students from another community to Methuen?
Yes, potentially.
That's what I thought.
And they're not necessarily, so one clarification, uh, all the students at the Days Inn are not necessarily attending Methuen Public Schools. So I just want to mention that. Um, but yes, there is a potential that if they are moved, which some have already been moved from Days Inn, um, there is potential cost if they remain with us here in Methuen.
Okay. And they would, they would have the right to remain in Methuen as long as they continue to be homeless?
Correct.
Is that correct? So it doesn't matter if they move to, let's say, New Bedford, we would still have to bus them?
Um, the rule of thumb is if the distance is in excess of an hour,
Okay.
then it's not in the best interest of the child to be transported. Um, and so those are conversations that we have. Um, and there are times that parents or guardians will say we would like the student to remain in Methuen, and then we have to appeal that decision.
Okay. But it is a cost to us if they leave Methuen now, a greater cost than what it is right now.
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make that aware.
Currently, we currently have students who, right, we're doing both. We have students who are enrolled with us and we have students that Ms. Bozek's office is already working on. They live at Days Inn but are bused too. So we, we own uh that part of that transportation cost.
Right. I just wanted to be clear to the committee that just because the Days Inn closes,
The cost doesn't add, yes.
The cost doesn't go away and it in fact could be increased, not decreased.
I just want to be cognizant of time. It's almost eight o'clock. We can have a brief statement.
Very brief. If you look at a few years ago, the cost of the the homelessness program, right, has been absolutely dwarfed by the illegal aliens coming into this state. We've wasted $2 billion and counting and going into the next fiscal year, the current fiscal year, we have $400 million deficit. Okay? In the next fiscal year, we're talking about our budget collectively definitely is an impact. So we can have a breakdown of the numbers of the homeless versus the illegal population that came into the state a couple of years ago, and we can have that breakdown. I have no problem with that. But we had $2 billion wasted on illegal aliens coming into the state. The governor's waking up to that problem. We have a $4 million, excuse me, $400 million deficit currently that's going to have to be shored up before the next fiscal year. And I know for a fact the next fiscal year is going to impact our school budget. So we can talk about numbers and I will definitely do that going into the next fiscal cycle. Thank you.
Member Donovan?
Uh, just for clarification, Ms. Bozek, um, under your year-to-date transportation expenses, special education, uh, it's parentheses plus $60,000, $67,000. Um, from when? Is that an increase from?
Last month.
From last month and, okay.
So what, so that year-to-date transportation expense, so the total is from July 1st forward, but the $67,000 is from last month. Now that is all dependent on when we've received invoices. It's not a $67,000 increase from last month. It's just when we've paid the invoices.
Okay. I appreciate that clarification.
That's not homeless.
It's, oh, okay. Okay. Thank you for that.
We'll move on now in the agenda to the Director of Human Resources report. Any questions from the committee?
It's only one page. I know, but I'm just saying.
Any questions from the committee regarding the facilities report?
I had a question for the um
The staff?
Yeah.
Yep.
Member Maxwell.
I'm sorry. The district-wide psychologist is listed at the Marsh. Um, would that just be, is that like their home base?
Yeah, it's simply because that's where, it needs to live in the budget somewhere when we do district-wide and we usually find an office in a building for district-wide staff. That's the only purpose for that.
Okay.
Yep.
Facilities. Member Shabilia?
So
Do you want me to explain what's here and start that conversation or?
Um
Dive right in. No, dive right in. We're good.
All right. So I
Dive right in.
I mean, first off, I think the efforts that have been taken over the last three or so weeks are are fantastic. I was in the Timony while those, that team was in there cleaning. It was amazing. It's an unfortunate reality that it can't be done every day. Watching them clean the vents at the Marsh was also, let's call it enlightening. Um, and talking to the folks that were spraying at the Tenny. Everyone I talked to said that they were coming into these buildings expecting them to be war zones. Direct quote from the gentleman I spoke to at the Tenny. And they were all surprised, pleasantly surprised at what they were coming into because it wasn't as bad as what they were anticipating. Now, things have a way of becoming worse as soon as they hit the public ear. But is it great? No. Is it as bad as these folks thought it was going to be coming in? No. That being said, thinking about our standard facilities report, um, I I took the same approach I took with the the last report. I, it, I'm looking at it and going, okay, this is great. You changed light bulbs. They updated the HAC system over here.
The one that we presented in December, right?
Right, our standard report.
Yep, I understand.
And my thought was that's, that's great and this report is lovely, but again, what do we do with it? This just shows that people are out there doing their job and that's, that's great. I had a conversation with Bruce on Friday, um, trying to figure out how we operationalize that report so it becomes a useful piece of information. And I mean, it's, it's with his support that I say, I, I think a better use of a facilities discussion would be a monthly report of the ongoing issues. Something tied to, for example, our capital improvement plan, which I know gets submitted to the city. That I think is something that we all as a committee can review, especially where budget time is is looming right around the corner for not only us, but for our delegation and everyone else. We can see that and say, okay, this is what we're looking at. How do we plan for this? And that also helps with the presentation of the capital improvement plan to the city. I don't know what our capital improvement plan looks like. I've never seen it. So what?
It was in your budget book.
No, oh, no, I mean, it, does it not like a bigger thing? I would expect
It's not a much bigger thing than what you saw. It's, it's the project. I mean, we present it with the city in a spreadsheet format. So there's cost and time and a more project-based planning.
And that's what I would expect to see.
Narrative is exactly what we put in that spreadsheet.
Right. So I, I, I know the page in the budget book.
Yep.
But what I would expect to see is more detail as to what, what the plan is and like what the goal is and what we're asking for the funding for.
Got it.
I guess is a better way to phrase it instead of saying, I don't know what it is. Um, and and talking to Bruce, he also recommended maybe submitting the P1 tickets, which I think is more actionable for us and more enlightening than looking at a list of things that they did. And I mean, I would welcome feedback because I, I'm just, I'm trying to find a way to make this report useful instead of just an exercise in information gathering.
Member Willett?
I think what we, we're moving in the right direction and I understand exactly what you're saying. We really have to disclose in a truthful and accountable fashion what is going on with our school system. So the format that we have currently in this report, I think, tells us what we've completed, what's in progress and what has not been completed. So in follow-up meetings, when we had the ticket system, things that should be probably encapsulated by the individual principals, right, should be reported to us. And the format could be this of these are the classrooms that had significant issues and we went through these classrooms and we completed and we're in compliance with the inspector's report. Now, we've had like literally years, if not decades, of things that we put by the wayside in order to focus on our main budget of personnel and funding positions. And I want to make sure that as a school committee, as a community, we're taking advantage of opportunities out there that other communities are taking advantage of. For instance, with the accelerated repair program, and I talked to you about that, with the school building authority, right? There's an opportunity to look at with our boilers and maybe some, the roof repair or windows, putting in a package, right, and having us receive funding from the state. And it could be like in Haverhill, it was 76% funding from the state and the remaining remount was 24%. And because we have more money in our cash reserves, that lowers our interest rates and it's more affordable for us to take on that type of uh program with the accelerated repair of our schools because that's a new feature of the school building a- authority. But in Haverhill, it was from the beginning of the application process, which would need to be approved by the school committee and by the city council, that they're on the same page, okay? There's an application process that's going to be starting soon.
We're, we're in the middle of it right now.
Okay.
Yep.
So that's, but that for Haverhill, it took a, a course of three years from start to finish.
They filed, they came in the last two weeks. That's where Bruce has been and walking. They've gone to every school uh, coming in to do the assessment piece. Uh, actually, we just got the email. Uh, Mr. Goslin and Mr. Sella have a few more pieces to give to the state as far as equipment and details. But that will, that will allow the state to tell us what we would qualify for because we have to qualify for these things before we can actually put in our letter of interest in March. So we are, we are well into that process and you're right, it's not going to happen tomorrow. Uh, putting in the letter of interest, starting in March, I think this pro- program opens March 6th, if I remember correctly, uh, that we could even put the letter of interest in depending on what the state says we are qualified for.
Yes.
Um, you know, it's, it's not, again, it's not going to be all of it and it's not going to happen now. It's going to take some time. If we do qualify, it's going to have to be sort of put out and planned when those bigger projects of windows and roofs and doors and things like that for the accelerated repair part, not the building construction. Yeah.
Now, I know in conversations with the chairman, he is dedicated to emergency cleaning from outside uh resources into our schools. We did the, the Timony. I think there's a commitment to do the Tenny. And I know with the Marsh, we did the, the ventilation, right? And another thing I'm interested in is establishing some type of protocol that we know in a certain timeline, we're looking through our ventilation systems. We're upgrading our energy resources. And I know we have the Department of uh Energy Resources that we apply on a, a regular basis for funding. And maybe that's another element of checking within our schools of the Department of Energy Resources. So I think us reporting is very important because if we didn't disclose it, I think someone would complain that we're not disclosing. I think that the mayor's website is absolutely 100% important to the process. I think that the health and and safety task force and inviting, I think, a, a teacher to that process is absolutely necessary. Okay? And we will work through these issues and we'll have emergency funding. There will have to be some type of capital bond in terms of replacing furniture and cabinets and doing masonry work and tiles. And then also too, inviting the vocational students and approaching Home Depot and Lowe's and maybe getting supplies and doing a partnership with the vocational kids and building the cabinets and building new bookcases. I want us to take advantage of every opportunity of funding. And I know the mayor is committed to doing a package before the city council. But again, some of it's going to be emergency, some of it's going to involve the state. I know the, the federal green program, I think that's already elapsed. We did some of the stimulus funding. I understand that. Um, and the, again, the accelerated repair program, that's a different component. We are working together as a school committee and I'm, I'm dedicated to that process. And we'll have full disclosure of it. And I understand, uh, Member Shabilia, again, I have no problem of modifying the report, but I think a report is absolutely necessary because back in 2023 and 2022, we had a total of one report. When I got back to the school committee, we have had nine reports. And tell me that that is, that full disclosure hasn't helped with the process. And it's not a panacea. I'm not saying that, but we, we'll work, continue to work as a team. And again, if this is the template, then that's something I'm willing to look at, but we have to have some type of information. Beyond, again, our mandate is not day-to-day operations, but we've been doing it. We've been visiting the schools. We've been in contact with the mayor. We've been in contact with personnel on a daily basis. Recuminations, that's going to be another time. I'm interested in solutions. And that's what I've been doing since last January to this point, is the fulfillment of constituent services and finding the truth and having accountability and full disclosure and having the outside state inspectors coming in and your inspection team and working with that personnel and identifying issues and following up. And that's going to be an ongoing process. So there's no illusion on that and it's not a panacea, but we're working in that direction. Thank you.
I'm not advocating to scrap a report. I'm advocating to make the report actionable. I'm advocating for the report to be something that is clear and concise of what needs to happen and how we can aid in doing that. Also, I would argue that reading those reports over the last 12 meetings where we've had them has not advanced the problem or advanced a solution to the problem. It has just put information out there for information purposes. But that's just my perspective.
We'll keep, we'll keep moving. Uh, Member Maxwell and then Member DiZoglio, and then we'll circle back around.
I just have a couple of questions on the reports. So a lot of the in-progress is that materials needed or ordered. When, when will the materials needed be here? For any of the projects, really?
So it depends on
That's my first question.
Yeah, no, it depends on what it is. I, I typed this myself.
So like all the cabinets and
So cabinets and I put that on the cover letter. So some of the cabinets, those, those, you know, the, I, uh, our team focused on cleanliness and the disinfecting pieces of the work first. The stuff that is in progress typically means we need kind of all hands on deck. Ripping down cabinets and rebuilding them is not going to be an easy or quick task. Uh, so we have that uh dedicated in some spaces during the vacations. Um, but I think there needs to be a lot, and I, I be a lot, and I believe I said it, and if I didn't, I thought it and I should have typed it, but, but the cabinets or rebuilding rotted wood, things like that, that aren't necessarily a direct priority cleanliness, health issue right now, I need a long-term plan for that. Because it, that, again, we can't just, we can't just knock down a shelf here, a shelf here. And again, with the few maintenance folks I have, I'm really trying to focus them on some of these other more pressing issues. But we do have some plans at the Marsh. We have some specific places, just because they've been thoroughly outlined, where we had the rotted wood and some water damage, that we will have those removed. Replaced? Probably not. But removed, for sure, right? So these are also part of it. It's a removal, a replaced, what am I going to replace it with? Those of you who, I think all of you have been in our classrooms, all of the wood shelving cabinets is, I'm pretty sure, original from all of the buildings. So if it's at the CGS, it's thirty years old. If it's at the tenny or timony in Marsh, it depends if it's the old side of the building, new side, how old it is. So there's just, there's a lot there that we need to think a little bit more about, how we're going to tackle that. Those are bigger projects. So, but some of these things, door sweeps, things like that, some of those have already been ordered. It's a matter of the ordering of installation. So I didn't go into that level of detail. I was trying to get this ready for tonight's meeting to make sure there was an absolute current progress report. And this is up to date as of last Wednesday, when, when I had to get the school committee packet ready. So even today, this is living and working. Principals and senior custodians are still updating this as we speak, right? So, you know, to, to member Willett's point, at some point, this is going to expire, right? We're going to, we're going to meet all of this and move on. What does the moving on look like? And I think that's the conversation. I think we're all on the same page of what does that moving on look like? How do we make sure that we have a long-term plan for this, and that it's sustainable, and that there are systems in place that just don't get missed? And that's what, you know, I don't have that for you tonight. That's going to take some time, because we have been, this has been fast and furious trying to get this stuff remediated right now, right? But, but those conversations, I would say, this past week have started to happen of what is that long-term? We've got vacations, we've got summer, but those go quickly as well. If we do, you know, and that's all impactful on everything else we do, right? If, if the carpets get replaced in the schools, nothing else is going to happen in those buildings this summer. That's just, that's just the way it's going to go, because we have to do the abatement and the removal. So, so how...
Well, I, I wanted to comment on a couple of other things, too.
Yeah. So, but anyway, the, the long-term is what we're really, we are focused on some of the long-term. This shows you that we were focused immediately on the cleanliness aspects and immediate health concerns. Some of those other projects are, need to happen, but they weren't necessarily the immediate health concerns that we had with the staff that we had.
So there are a few immediate emergency things that, well, a couple of things say complete that aren't complete, but, like, the boys locker room, there's no hot water in there. There's small black spots on ceiling in the fourth grade boys restroom. Is that just going to be, like, painted over?
Where, where are you, where are you looking? What school?
That one's the Marsh. And then at the bottom, two sixteen, room is empty, has not been used since roof leak. It was a window leak, not a roof leak, but it says it was complete. Not sure why it's complete when it shows signs of a black substance. I mean, was the air quality reports done in there? Also, in the what? Also, in the tenny, there's a bunch of water ceiling damage that has complete next to it, which is concerning. Did we inspect why there's water damage in the ceilings? The boys locker room has rusty lockers. Like, there's a lot of things that are marked complete, but they're not complete. And that's concerning.
So any, anything that was marked complete was the cleanliness part? So if there was, if there was tiles that need removing?
Just the cleanliness part, not the black mold, not the, we're not testing every room that is in these reports as saying black.
We're not testing every, I mean, we just, we physically can't test those rooms?
Even in the health report, even the ones that are identified as possible mold, we're not testing those rooms?
Right. So I think...
Well, we have the department, you're referring to the Marsh?
No, I think she's referring to everything.
I'm referring to the timony. I'm referring to the tenny. There's a couple, there's a couple in progress that says water damage. And then they also say black questionable spots, possibly mold, question mark, and it says complete.
Yeah.
So I think you're referring to room one oh seven, for instance, there?
And this one's one forty. This one's two oh five.
So the difference, member Maxwell, is that complete means that it was, it was...
It's not complete.
Well, it is complete in the sense that everybody that we have talked to, including the city health department and the state health department, because I walked around with that gentleman as well the entire day he was here at the Marsh, was very clear that anything that would appear to be mold, we need to clean, right, and make sure there's no water source to actually do it. So when I say complete...
Cleaning it doesn't necessarily get rid of the problem. And painting over it surely doesn't get rid of the problem. That's a concern.
Right. So any, anywhere that we had, so if you look at the Marsh report, for example, is the best, this is the best thing, and a couple of you were with me, so just chime in, but that they are, they're, at the Marsh, it was about cleaning it, and that there was no water. I, I don't know what that tool was, but, but there was no...
It was a moisture meter?
Moisture meter. That there was no moisture, right, it was dry. So it basically is, there's no water that's continuously coming into the space. At some point, there was water. So clean it. And, and that was really what his, the state guy, the state inspector, was really clear on. You need to remove it and clean it. Now, if we have a situation where we have a, we have, we have definitely identified some places where we have consistent leaks that we need to repair, those are being looked at a little differently, right? I need to repair, we have a sprinkler in one of the spaces that needed repairing before I could replace the tiles on the ceiling, right? So we are doing those things. So complete means if it needed to be cleaned, it was absolutely cleaned, things replaced, removed, painted, whatever it needed, it was done.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, I just, I just assumed complete meant that the entire problem was going to be dealt with and resolved. I don't know. I mean, when it says mold and mildew on the outside and counters showing water signs of damage, and then it says complete without an air quality test being done, that, you know, that's troublesome. I can, I can understand the concerns of the teachers that are in, in those rooms. I, I just...
Yeah.
I think that this list is just, I don't know, it's kind of deceiving. It's not really, it's not really in progress. It's just whatever, whatever the cleaning is, is complete. But the stuff behind the cleaning that actually needs to be done to get rid of the problem isn't complete.
That's not necessarily true.
Okay.
And I'll also just mention that, and I'll, I have some things I want to say, and as the chair, I'll speak last. But just to clarify, we did have the Department of Public Health come in and do air quality testing, et cetera, at the Marsh, for instance. And that report, it's available online at luthuun.gov/schoolsafety. I put that up there today.
Was that every room that was noted in this report?
We went to every classroom. But anyway, that, that report has more information that's online regarding specifics about what they found, but also their recommendations going forward. And just for the sake of transparency, i.e. not to use that buzzword, but a lot of these things are, it's not like deep cleaning. A lot of these things are going to take us some time. And I think that that's why it's important for our task force to continue to ensure that we're adhering to...
I agree. I, I don't want you to think I meant, like, I expect this to be overnight. I just don't want it to look like things are complete when, you know, people are in the buildings and see, like, this isn't actually complete. This isn't fair to report that it's complete. You know what I mean? And I just, for transparency, I want to be transparent. It's in progress, but it's not complete. And it may take some time, but it's in progress.
Understood. Member DeZoglio?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I've been on school committee for five years now. And this report just, I just wish we, we knew sooner, in the sense of, I was never told of these problems. We were always told, every building has mice. I work in a school, and I never seen mice in two years, but all of a sudden, I've seen three in the last two days, which is jinxed. And I've said that. But I was always at these meetings, and when questions were asked, it was always considered a minor thing. Or the mayor would say, not this mayor, but the formal mayor, would say, we, we are dealing with the same issue at town hall. And when you're twenty-nine years old, you, you just trust what you're being told, which is one thing people would tell you, don't ever do that. I think one of the things is, is, yes, it's great that we're moving forward, but we also need to know why we got here. Why that it went by the wayside for so long? Teachers that I've talked to have been telling me these issues that's been talked to, to their administrators, who's talking to private parties, and nothing was done. I spent my days on Thursday and Friday at the Marsh and the timony, and I talked to people. Some of the teachers are in the back over there. I appreciate you guys for having me. And that was their major concerns. Their major concerns is that their voices are never heard, and when they, and they are worried about being fired or being, being written up. And that's why they don't talk anymore. They just become comfortable with the environment, that, yeah, you see a mouse run across your classroom, it's no big deal. It's, it's a normal thing. And to me, that is, shouldn't be the normcy. And it's great that we're doing that now, that, but how did we get here? That's one thing nobody's talking about. And one of the things I do want the school committee needs to be involved in, we need to be involved more. We need our facilities committee, subcommittee should overlook the capital improvement plan. We should be involved to see, making sure that things are being done. That's great that we're thinking about doing the report in a different way, the concerns that members should really have brought up. The vocational effort, I think that is absolutely necessary. I just learned the other day, we used to have, like, a co-op, that kids that weren't going to college were offered jobs here. Why don't we offer that again? And that's, we should be, we should be actively looking at these channels. And people will say, well, that's a good idea. But no, don't knock it until you try it right now. Another very big thing that we suggest, because everybody's throwing suggestions out there, is that the vocational school, absolutely, because I've talked to our custodian staff, they're about to lose their ma, maintenance guy, a craftsman, because of retirement. And we don't have anybody in the back burner to train. So that's going to be costly in the future, because we'll be subbing out work to have work done in the schools, and we'll be paying more than we're paying our guys that we're working in. So we need to think of that plan. And I think by having members in meetings and looking at these issues, it also brings morale up, because I, I did, the two days I spent at the schools, teacher says, thank you for coming in. Thank you for listening. Thank you for hearing us when we asked you guys to come in. Like, it's, it's time for that. It's, we can't just be a body that says, well, we can't be in day-to-day operations. The building itself, I, I don't know, that purview, to me, that's not, that's not interrupting day-to-day operations. I think we, we, we need to, because this list, that's years of neglect. I'm sorry. To me, that's years of neglect. And moving forward to do that, we need to change things. So that's just all I want to say. I don't need people to tell me I'm wrong, or tell me how they feel about how, what I feel. As the member that's been on it for five years, I'm taking accountable that I should have known. That's all. I should have known. I should have known more. And, yeah. Thank you.
I'll briefly add just a few points to share an update, I think, with the committee, but also with the public in general, about some of the things that we've done. I know that this has been publicized, but just to kind of clarify things here altogether. So just before Christmas, we had that Department of Public Health visit to the Marsh. And right away, as a result of that, there were recommendations about ensuring that we clean, for instance, the exhaust vents at the Marsh, et cetera. And so we brought in a company called a complete cleaning company out of the North Shore. And they conducted a deep clean of the timony school, and they assisted us with the cleaning of the vents, as recommended by DPH, at the Marsh, and utilizing Chapter 278. And also given the fact that we're still awaiting certification from the state of our free cash, we're expecting that sometime in the coming week, utilizing the extraordinary maintenance line item for now until that's certified. But going forward, we have a plan now, especially with Pest End. You might notice, outside of the building, here at the high school, but also at the other school buildings, we have had them install outdoor rodent control systems at all four grammar schools, plus the high school, with the objective of trying to do, we can, to deal with the problem outdoors before they enter the building. I'm referring to the rodent issue. But also, over the break, Pest End came into all four grammar schools, as well as the high school, to conduct, in essence, cleaning of rodent droppings that they identified, but also taking care of disinfecting and sanitizing the buildings to address potential pathogens as well. And going forward, I think it's key for us to continue this process of assisting our custodial staff, bringing them up to speed at all the schools with the deep cleaning service. So this is something that I want to look at for the February break, as well as the April break, and namely focusing on, I think, the tenny and the Marsh next, just in terms of that priority list that we got from the city inspection reports. And the other thing, too, is we, we need to prioritize over the next couple of months. I know during the summer break, as the superintendent referenced, we, we need to address the issue of replacing the carpets. It's a major issue, and I think that we need to prioritize it once and for all, just so we can get that done. I also want to use this opportunity to address some concerns that I've heard related to the narrative from the city as it relates to these broader issues. And I, I can't speak for other members of this committee. I can't speak for members of the city council, but I can speak for myself. During a recent city council meeting, I made a statement regarding teachers' use of various types of food preparation appliances during that meeting. And really, my, my heart there was to draw attention, shine a light on the need for a team approach to addressing a lot of these issues. However, in hindsight, it's easy to see how my words could be perceived as a blanket statement that effectively blames teachers for these facility issues that we're seeing. That was not my intent, and I apologize to our city's teachers for making such a blanket statement along those lines. And I pledge to do better going forward and utilize a more positive tone that aims to unite our city rather than divide us any further. So I just wanted to share that briefly with our teachers. Do we have any other questions, concerns from the committee? Vice Chair and then member Willett?
One of the issues that I've been hearing from the custodians when we went to, especially in the timony, is that the school is always being used, and that one of our janitors is being pulled for those extracurricular activities. And that means we don't have the full staff to be cleaning the timony. And I, I just have to wonder how we can share the use of the schools so that the timony isn't always the one being used, and perhaps cut down on the number of events that are going on at the timony, and, you know, figure out, like, what can go there and what can go, say, at the CGS, which is the underused school, and really spread that around so that we can actually clean the timony, right? Because we never get a chance to just clean the timony. Right? Because we never get a chance to just clean the Timoney, because it's always being used. So, um, I, I'd like to come up with a plan that we are not renting out the Timoney all the time. And that we put a limit on the number of rentals we have at the Timoney, so that we can actually address these problems.
Yeah, I, I, um, just to comment on that, you know, it is, uh, by far of the five schools, it is the most used school, gym auditor- small gym, big gym auditorium, uh, for a variety of reasons, right? The high school is certainly used, but used in a very compartmentalized space, and mostly used by high school programs, right? Not a lot of, uh, on the weekends, uh, basketball, but not a lot of community programs are coming in during the week, cause our kids are using it. Um, the hardest part about what you just said, uh, is that each school has its limitations as far as what it can provide. And the best example I can give you is that some of our schools, uh, you can't have, let's say, volleyball teams or a game in there, because they are not, uh, the right size and don't have the holes for volleyball in that. So they can never use that. Guess what school does? The Timoney. Right? So there's, there's, there's just challenges, because the Timoney kinda has everything everybody needs. And it has the parking spaces, it has the auditorium right next to it, the gym is right there. I mean, the world does use the Timoney. Uh, but it is causing some consternation with, uh, the staffing is, you know, we're, it's a, it is a huge building. Um, and are also, our high school teams right now use that Timoney, because they can walk there. We can't expect our freshman girls to drive to practice or games, so they're held at the Timoney. So while the Tenny is the next most used school, uh, it, it, it still doesn't compare to how many events are happening at the Timoney at a given time, because of the space and what the space provides. So it is a huge challenge, and, uh, another huge challenge in this community is the fact that, as large as we are, we only have five schools to give. Right? So many other, we have the same number of school gyms that North Andover does. And we're twice the size. So it's just, there's a lot of different things that go into that. And trust me, we are gonna be thinking about that. Mr. Goslin and I have already been talking about the rental, just the constant, the pace of the rentals. Because it's not only kid use, we have, police department uses it for basket- I mean, we have community team, you know, community, it's a community building, right? Um, so we're just trying to figure out the balance of having it be, they're community buildings, you can't, we can't close them. Um, but how do we balance that to just be like, where's the pause button? Certain times a year that we need to just pause and clear things out? And just say like, "Can't be used right now, cause we need to inspect, you know, make it better." Um, so we're working through all of that. I do appreciate, uh, that, cause that, that's a big stress on the building right now too, is, uh, not being fully staffed, or having enough staff on a day-to-day, cause people are out sick, take vacation, like everything else we're dealing with. Um, to have a staff member pulled to come to the gym to set something up, or to clean something, or to do something, because a group is in there, is certainly challenging. And I appreciate the acknowledgement of that, and the, I mean, we don't have a solution right now, but we, we're gonna work through that and see what we can come up with. Yep.
It's an important topic. We can circle back for a second. Round Member Willett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And again, like I said, this is very healthy. Um, and another idea that I tossed out last year was that, um, the sale of, uh, surplus schools. We should have some type of mechanism that, that money will go back into our schools to help with deficiencies within our schools. And I know that's an ongoing conversation. I know it was with the prior mayor and with the current mayor. Is that we should be looking at every opportunity for, for funding, um, to help with, uh, schools. And I know, again, I represent one voice, one vote. So these are just ideas I'm tossing out there. Another thing is that we should have, um, maybe some additional custodians, but that's a, a budget consideration. And also, a hybrid approach going forward of having a combination of custodians that are manned as best we can under the budget, that's gonna be presented to us from the state and the governor. And the deep cleaning outside sources, it has to be a hybrid approach on a permanent basis of cleaning our ventilations, uh, and also, um, doing a deep clean. And again, the thing that was brought to my attention, and Member Maxwell, you raised very good points. We were at the school, I'm not gonna emphasize which school it was. I have no illusion that those issues have not, um, that those issues have been resolved. Those are ongoing issues, um, with the school that we, we visited. I'm not gonna highlight the school. But, um, we need to, if, uh, high-traffic schools should involve a combination of custodians, the properly manned, and if it involves at times overtime, if there's callouts or people on sick leave, right, in addition to the deep cleaning. And, again, I don't wanna blame somebody, but if we have, uh, facilities rental fees, and if we have it up to a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, what exactly are those fees being used for? It's the same thing with the, the parking fees. If that is like sixty-two thousand dollars, I, I want that by the end of the year, ten thousand dollars on both accounts. You have a little bit of a cushion, but let's start using those rental fees into the schools themselves. Um, so that's being proactive, working with the mayor, working with the, the committee. And again, Members Shabelia, you and I, we're at loggerheads at times, and we have our debates, but your, your heart is in the right place, we'll have our disagreements. I have no illusion that this is gonna be an ongoing process, and a simple piece of paper isn't gonna solve. It, it's something that's been years, and like Member DeZaglio said, we could have recriminations, I could talk about prior school committees. It doesn't solve the situation. We gotta have solutions and a combination of state and local funding, emergency funding. And again, I know the mayor said he's the education mayor, and I'm gonna hold him to that, and he's been in regular communication with me. Every single time I've sent him an email, a text, a, a message, he's been very responsive. He's been conducive to our ideas. We did a hotline, and it's confidential, so please, uh, the community, use it like we had the residency enforcement. We had a hotline that people could, uh, in confidence disclose issues, and we will follow up. I will take things in confidence. And again, I share the same thing. I'm not interested in a conflict and a drama, I'm interested in, in resolutions. And that's always been my mentality. So I share the same thing. It was never interpreted of attack, I will never scapegoat the frontline workers. You've never heard of the custodians, or the teachers, or the staff. I will never scapegoat them. So if I make a mistake, and sometimes in my language, I will personally apologize for that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Donovan?
Well, I'd like to bring it all home and say how much I do appreciate the partnership, uh, with the city. School side, uh, I think it's been pretty unprecedented in my many years in this district to see the two forms of, the two most important people in our community working together as a team. And it means a great deal to me as a taxpayer, as a former parent, and as a representative of our, our parents. And, you know, it, it was a terrible, it's a tough situation, but I think we are looking through now the front, the windshield, not the rearview mirror. And it's a much wider view of things. We have a lot of work to be done, but I have some great confidence in the partnership that I've seen being created. Thank you.
Thank you. Members Shabelia, one more point? Sorry, Member Donovan.
No, real quick, I just, I al- almost told Mayor Beth, almost. Um, the, the facilities in, the facility subcommittee, I wanted to clarify, was formed with the intent and purpose to be the group that is dealing with the disposition of the two, maybe three, buildings, TBD. Um, so I don't think that that subcommittee has scope over this. Um, also, on the marsh, and I didn't catch this the first time, until a few minutes ago, sitting here looking at it again, room two sixteen, it says the room is empty and not been used since the leak. That room is n- not empty. I know, we were in it the day we were there. It's a resource room.
I typed exactly what was on that form, even if it wasn't-
I think it may have been empty when they were there.
Maybe.
Because it's a resource room, and they, kids go in and out.
I didn't wanna be accused of typing anything different than was on the report.
I know, just-
So, I know that it's not empty, but that's what the report said, and, uh, we know what the problem is in that room.
Right.
Yep.
We don't have empty space anywhere.
Right. And you're right, I think it was empty when they were there, necess- not necessarily not been used since. So yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, next on... It's an, it's an important topic, so we can, we can engage, that's fine.
So, to, to, kind of back to Members Shabelia, yes, the facilities is, is in that, but you could always expand a subcommittee's objectives. That's just, that's just one. Also, instead of looking at what we could do to reduce rental fees and all that, and, and rental usage, let's just add more staff. Like, the next budget, we passed the budget, as I recall, I voted last year's budget, no. Cause of what it was. And, uh, again, if I don't see custodians added, uh, to this one, and we cut it, I'm gonna vote no again. Cause that is one of the major things we need to do. Is that we pass the budget, and I know it's all about a number, getting down to a number, but we could pass the budget that Dr. Kwong passes and let the city council vote on it. And if they vote no, then we'll deal with it. But, we shouldn't give up things right now when we need to fund our schools. That's just, I'm hearing all these different ways of, again, like that parent said, cut corners. Then actually solving the solution, and I get it. Member Willett said, the state, the state funding, the, yep, that, that, I know, I know, member. But again, to set that to the council and put that, and I'm not trying to cause a rift between the two, but let them make that decision. They wanna vote no, let them vote no. If not, I'm gonna vote no on the same budget. Cause I, if it's shorter than the number that, that will get us up to par, then as a member of the school committee that represents the schools, I'm gonna vote no. So, here's, is that. I just wanna finish up with that, take it home, but ready to work.
So we had on the agenda also, uh, Board of Health Progress Monitoring, we covered that, I think, pretty extensively.
Yes, I think we've covered both of those.
Pest End, we covered extensively, so-
Agree.
I just wanna say, thank you to Pest End. It was, is no fee for three months on that state-of-the-art system that they provide for our, our community.
And also, uh, along the lines of Pest End, uh, they started work on Christmas Eve.
Yep.
They had teams in the schools on Christmas Eve, which is great.
And they're a methone-based business, an outstanding reputation, so I just wanna say that for the record. No cost to us what they were, were doing for us. Thank you.
For the new system, for the rest of it.
Yes, yes, yes.
Oh, yeah.
A bit of a cost, yeah.
Yeah, right. Um, so at this point, uh, we'll move on to the Out of School Suspensions and Other Disciplinary Actions Report. Any questions from the committee?
Just one comment.
Members?
Uh, same comment as before. If, I just want to be able to acknowledge that this is information for information purposes, or if there is something that would be helpful from the body to, to do something with this. Otherwise, it's, and i- if it's information for information purposes, that's cool, if we can acknowledge that. But if we can action it somehow to assist you, the folks in the building, in any way, it makes the report meaningful, and that's kinda what I wanna stare to, if you guys haven't caught on to where I'm going this year.
I mean, the, the report is solely, this has never been, and we've never had a report like this.
I may have actually requested this at one point.
I think you might've.
So, and I acknowledge that, and I-
I think, oh yeah, I think, Member Keegan maybe re- asked it, and then it just has kinda grown into information.
It ballooned a bit, yeah.
To see if some of the things we're doing is working. Um, so, this is born out of the will of, of you all, and, uh, you know, what, what I can see from it, I would say, the last page is the most important, the policy, uh, piece of it, to see if our policy is working, and it continues to work. I mean, it really does. Um, you know, I think after the, the vacation, we heard, uh, Dr. Golovski and I have been in some schools and classrooms since we've come back. And, uh, I think some of our students need friendly reminders, right? So the, the principals and the teachers have been doing the friendly reminders about the cell phone policy and the remove the headphones. So I think that's been happening over the past week, but they're kids, and that's typically what we would do anyway, after any kind of break. But, that one to me has been the most helpful, just pulling it every month. And we have a way to do that, um, to see if what we're putting in place has worked. Um, the other information, this is information we live and know every day, so it's really, uh, you know, I, I don't see the suspension numbers, uh, being actionable necessarily. Uh, but I do wanna also say that, um, I have asked the principals to, uh, I want a report to be able to share with you all the impact that the, um, risk coordinator and the crisis intervention staff that we kept in the budget, uh, the impact that that has had, that is a conversation, Member Donovan and I have had, and I have, uh, asked the principals to think about that, and what they wanna report out. Because, uh, their conversations at our level have been incredibly positive. And if I gave you this report, the suspension report right now compared to last year, you would see a decrease. And I'm not saying that it's a hundred percent correlated, but there's definitely a correlation there on what we're seeing with overall behaviors, and some of the things that we've put in place to support, uh, the, um, change in behavior, right? Our goal is to change behavior. So before it gets to suspensions or repeat suspensions, uh, we have staff in buildings working really hard with students. So, uh, they're excited to report out, they're, you know, coming up with some of the data that they've been looking at themselves. I think that's important for us to have, it's important for me to have, um, when we're presenting the budget as well, is why we wanna keep positions, and so, uh, I do think that's important. You can't see that here, but I can easily share with you that this report, exactly a year ago, uh, is different. And less this year than it was last year. And I just jinxed everybody. Knock on wood, cause we're halfway through the year. Um, you know, so that's helpful for us, but-
As long as it's helpful, I'm happy. Otherwise, we could change it.
Again, yeah, it's, this was your, the will of the committee, so, uh, if it's information that you don't want, we're happy to remove it. It's reports that are automatic for us and Infinite Campus, so we can add them back in. Uh, it just, it's really the will of the committee at this point.
Member Maxwell?
Um, just a quick question on the cell phone policy violations. Are these all happening during school, or, or are you counting after-school incidents as well?
These are all, uh, I believe, I will check, I'm looking at Dr. Golovski, cause she works with Mr. Circa as well, but, uh, I believe these are all incidences that have happened during classroom time, uh, in violation of the policy.
So none after-school? My concern is with the school dances and everything, I know that that was a part of the policy, and some schools are allowed to use them during school dances and some aren't, so-
I'd have to double-check, and if you give me that opportunity, I will definitely double-check and report that back out, um, to see if, if any of those were happening at other school events as defined. Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, I definitely will.
Other questions, comments from the committee? If not, we will move on to Old Business and Other Penning Matters. We have the whistleblower policy, this would be, uh, the second and final read for this, to adopt it. We need a motion and a second to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Members Shabelia, second from the Vice Chair, discussion? Member DeZaglio?
I just have, um, just a general statement. As I went to the two schools the other day and talked to the staff, the, one of the things they are worried about is again, that, okay, this, this policy's in place, but is this really going to protect me? So I, I don't, uh, I'm, I'm in full support of it, it's great. And the thing about it is, we need to educate, uh, staff members of how this will protect them. That's, I just feel like they just, when, even when they read it, they don't believe it. So they're like, "Great." So, I don't know how we can do that. I don't, I'm just saying, with, behind this, I think we need to do an education thing with our staff. I'm just saying, with, behind this, I think we need to do an education thing with our staff to make sure they know the protections they have.
Any other comments or questions from the committee? Member Shabiliya?
So, I do, this goes to Member DiZoglio's earlier point. People don't feel empowered to speak up for a slew of reasons. And now, this whistleblower policy was born out of a phone call that I received that seemed actionable, and I feel like this provided that particular person, which I assume is additional people, just an added layer of comfort. But this is, this is a redundant policy. Not only do they have the union, not only do they have the state ethics, they have the IG's office, there are several other organizations that would protect them from retaliation. That being said, I fully acknowledge that this workplace is no different than any other workplace, and just because your boss is not retaliating against you does not mean you're getting the brunt end of the stick. And, it's not a unique thing to Methuen, it's not special in education, it happens in every company all over the place if you say something that someone doesn't like. That's, that's just facts. That being said, I, I want to believe that the added layer of information shared here, the fact that although not involved in the actual operation and management, that you do have the, the, the school committee chair, mayor, the, the vice chair, and, you know, whoever else the superintendent may deem appropriate, adds that level of visibility where folks are going to be more conscious of the decisions they make. And again, this will all, if, if, if this truly is a problem, should come out in any Culture and Operations Audit that we do. And from there on, we can make appropriate recommendations and adjustments and mitigate further. Thank you.
Member Willett?
Very briefly, I've always, as in my 14 years of service, I've always allowed the constituents to forward things to me in confidence, and I maintain confidentiality. Is this a cure-all? No, but it's a policy that could help somebody. And like, my request was to make sure people had access to the information about the State Ethics Commission and the Attorney General's Office if they wanted to go outside that process. But I think it's a very helpful to the process. And like I said, if someone feels that they need to confidentially approach an elected official, I've always had that approach. You know, just like a reporter, you just, you maintain the confidentiality, you work through the issue and get it resolved. And that's always been my approach, so thank you.
Any other questions, comments? I'll just say before we vote, just personally, I've never met a whistleblower protection policy that I haven't liked. So, happy to vote in support of this. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We'll now move on to the Public Participation Policy. Again, this is the second read, we need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Member Shabiliya, second from Member DiZoglio, discussion?
Yes.
Member Shabiliya?
I guess, question, going through this, I mean, I, the changes are fine, if, if it makes residents happy to have their address not spoken at the podium, minor things make people happy, let's give them a win. However, going through this, I don't think, in my tenure in the city and watching school committee meetings, we've ever stopped someone from speaking at the podium, correct? Whether they be, whether they be from Methuen or from Tallahassee, we're, we're letting them talk. So, the way this policy reads is they have to be a member of the community, because it is, it is citizens. So, I mean, I guess my, 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 my change here would be to change all the term to strike in the second paragraph, citizens of Methuen, and just replace it with public participant, and then all the citizens throughout change to public participant. Because you may be speaking, so.
We don't have a reason to be speaking.
Well, that's, in the policy, you have to have a reason, it has to be topical, it has to be part of something, our purview, our scope. But, you may be from, I don't know, Haverhill and have a piece of business with the Methuen Public Schools. But according to this policy, you need to be a citizen of this city, or.
A teacher from Haverhill.
No, according to this, you're right.
Yeah, I read, that's what I do, like. Like, it's, it's, it's minute, I don't think it would ever change anything materially for us, it doesn't stop anything, but going through this over the weekend, it jumped out at me that you have to be a citizen, or you're not welcome at the podium. And, given the conversation that happened last week at the council meeting and all the discussion about how courts have upheld the fact that freedom of speech at the podium and all those good things, it just, it seemed like a, a simple change to make this more appropriate. So, I guess that would be the friendly amendment.
Can you state for the, can you just state for the record the specific, the wording?
Uh, to strike from the second paragraph, citizens of Methuen, and replace with the public participant, and to remove the word citizens throughout and replace with public participant.
So moved. Alright, second.
Second.
So, okay, so we have a motion and a second to amend the legislation and make those tweaks. Any discussion regarding the proposed amendment? If not, we'll vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Are you voting no? So, we'll record Member Maxwell as a no vote. Any other proposed amendments? If not, we need a motion to approve as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Member Shabiliya, second from the Vice Chair, further discussion? If not, we'll vote on the legislation as amended, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? We have no vote from Member Maxwell, aside from that, we have all others recorded as yes votes. We'll move on now to New Business. We need a motion and a second to approve the Methuen High School competency determination.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Member Shabiliya, the second is from the Vice Chair, discussion? Member Maxwell?
I just have a concern that there's no real competency test to, I mean, I know it was voted that MCAS needs to go away, but now Massachusetts is only one of four states that don't have a test, that doesn't have a test to test out their seniors. And I know that the competency determination relies on the student scoring, you know, and it said that grade 10 English or an equivalent course, Algebra I. I mean, as long as that passing grade is based on all work being turned in and completed, and it being right, and scoring at least 61% or higher per average throughout the year, then, you know, that would make sense. But, I just, I have a hard time with this because there's no, there's no standard. There's nothing to, we're just gonna graduate kids to graduate kids at this point, so.
I think if it would be helpful, Dr. Golovski can just go through some of the most important pieces of this and the task that is in front of all of you this evening, what we need to be able to move forward, just so you, so, so the public can also, because you're right, Member Maxwell, there's some interesting pieces to this that we are now faced with, and that, and that we may not all agree with, but it is now a part of legislation, right? And so, we do have to adhere to certain things, so we'd like to be able to share that tonight. And then, I believe on the last slide has what we need you to motion to approve tonight so that we can continue to move forward in this process of making sure that we have what we need for our graduating class this year and our previous class students who are coming to us at this point, so. Yeah, I don't know if you want to vote to move past nine o'clock, because it's five of nine.
Yeah, we'll have to, we have to.
Motion to extend?
Second.
Okay, the motion is from Member Shabiliya to extend past nine o'clock, the second is from Member DiZoglio. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, we'll move on past nine and return to the presentation.
Alright, so, I thought we would start by making the distinction between graduation requirement and competency determination. So, just to start with an overview, and this was pulled right from the, the program studies. So, the current graduation requirements from Methuen High School, students need to complete a full four years, and they need to complete the credit requirements and meet the standards for competency determination. So, none of that is changing. What is changing is what we are considering to be the competency determination. So, the credit requirements will remain the same, the full four years, and high school remains the same. It's just, the discussion tonight is what we're considering to be the competency determination. So, just an overview of what the credit requirements are. And you'll see here, it's by subject, a number of credits, and we do align with Mass Core, which I'll talk about in the next slide. But students need to take and pass four full years of English, math, three years of a lab science, three years of history and social science, world language, they need two full-year courses in the same language. There needs to be one full year's worth of fine arts, two full years' worth of physical education, two credits, health, and then elective credits. So, we align with Mass Core, and we did so purposefully, we revisited this a few years ago to make sure that we were aligned and added in the fine arts requirement. And this is the state-recommended program of study, which in theory makes students prepared for the workforce and prepares them for higher education. And this, these would be the courses that a college, university, and the Massachusetts system would expect to see on an applicant's transcript. So, we want to make sure that students were prepared for whatever next step they would take. And we feel really good about that now, because with the competency determination change, moving away from MCAS, we feel strong, strongly that our required courses are, are good to lean on to earn a diploma. And you'll see here, the Boston Globe did an article in October and talked about the report from Voices of Academic Equity that found that only half of all Massachusetts schools have graduation requirements that either meet or exceed Mass Core standards. So, others are close, but we are in that half that do have the Mass Core alignment. Okay, so again, to be clear, we're talking about that third criterion, which is the competency determination. So, since 2003, the competency determination had been based on the qualifying scores earned on the MCAS tests. And students still need to earn a CD to graduate. The issue is, the CD has changed, and it's up to districts to determine what that is. So, DESI was clear in communicating that they don't have a suggestion at this point or a standardized recommendation. They say in the future they will. But they do recommend that the coursework, not necessarily courses, but coursework in the areas that were previously tested by MCAS tests, be used as evidence that the student is able and ready to graduate. So, it is a little complicated, because our Mass Core credit requirements overlap with what the courses would be to prove the competency determination, if we went by the courses here. But where it helps us is when we have students enrolling from other districts or schools, or when we have students matriculate to the high school, it puts that set of eyes on the transcript to make sure that all students do get to that step of geometry and have the opportunity to demonstrate proficiency in Algebra I. So, DESI does recommend that first steps, we think about the graduating class. So, the class of 2025, what does that mean for them in just a few short months? So, students who had previously earned a competency determination on the MCAS tests for the current seniors, they're cleared, the CD would count for them. And that's through the retest in 2024. Students in the graduating test, graduating class of 2025 who have yet to earn a CD, so those that hadn't met the qualifying score on the MCAS exam, we're proposing here, in the bullets below in red, that they demonstrate their proficiency in those areas through the passing score in grade 10 English, Algebra I and geometry, and a passing grade in biology, chemistry, or physics, or the equivalent courses. And so, as you can imagine, all districts across the state are in the same position. And I've spoken with a number of people in my role in other districts, we've been on several listservs, there's a bunch of shared Google folders out there of people posting what their best ideas are for competency determination, and I haven't seen anything other than this. This is predominantly what I'd say 95% of the districts are moving toward for this year. With the, with the few differences here and there, but this is predominantly where the majority seem to be going. Okay, so, how does this impact students from previous years? Because that, that brings about a change in an opportunity. So, students who hadn't had the opportunity or hadn't earned a diploma in previous years, it's our responsibility to offer that. So, previously, if students hadn't passed the MCAS and therefore hadn't earned a diploma, they could reach out to us, we would reach out to them and offer the opportunity to retest. So, they'd be able to come in and have the opportunity to earn their CD that way and potentially earn a diploma after their, their class had exited Methuen High School. So, the same needs to be true here. So, students still need to be afforded the opportunity to earn their CD from previous classes. So, without the MCAS being in play, we propose a request that the students could request a transcript review. So, we would review their transcripts to see if there's demonstration of passing coursework in those designated areas. So, a student found who have passed those listed courses or their equivalents would therefore earn a diploma, and that diploma would make them a graduate of the class of 2025, not of the year they exited Methuen High School. So, that brings about a bunch of questions. So, DESI recommends, and on this table here you'll see, that right now, we focus on the short term. So, the students immediately in front of us in the graduating class, those students who are reaching out, I know Ms. Tatro at the high school has said there have been students reaching out from previous years already. And there's a list here of what DESI had supplied to us as what they see as, as their responsibility or vision, and also that of, of the board. So, immediately, we're thinking about what's happening in June with our seniors and the students from previous years who have reached out. And then, we need to think about also, going forward, what that means for students in grades currently 9, 10, and 11, incoming students. But whatever decision that we make going forward, we need to get the word out and communicate to families and in multiple languages about where we plan to go. So, as, as recommended by DESI, that we seek board approval, we're looking to school committee to give us that approval to use the transcript review in those designated subjects as the competency determination for students in the class of 2025. And the transcript reviews for students from previous years will be performed by counseling staff and school administrators. And upon your approval, we will get that information out to students and families and post it on the website for those seeking a transcript review from previous years. They'd be able to file that via Google Form or calling the counseling office to get the ball rolling there. So, with all these changes, again, we're really proud and, and pleased that we have Mass Core in place, because there are many districts who are moving fast and. because there are many districts who are moving fast and furious to figure out how to strengthen their credit requirements for graduation, and we have that part down. Um, and the work we see on our end is, is reviewing the transcripts, making students are placed in the appropriate courses. And the work we're already doing and, um, making sure that our grading practices are, are equitable and solid also lends to this effort. Ms. Tatro is here tonight as well, the, our counseling department chair, if there are questions.
We'll start with, uh, Member Donovan, then we'll have Member Dzoglio, Member Shabelia. Member Donovan?
Just a few quick questions and one observation. So this year, every student has had, will have had the opportunity to qualify at least, because I know there's the retakes thrown in, to qualify for the Adams scholarships. Is that accurate?
Thank you, thank you for pointing that out. So the retests are still being offered, even though they cannot be used from this point forward as part of the competency determination for students who have transferred in after potentially that grade ten year and want to qualify or attempt to qualify for the Abigail Adams or the Coplex scholarships. And also, um, the SEAL of Bili literacy.
Oh, yeah.
It'll also be an important determinant for that moving forward.
Okay, because we do have a number of students who qualify for the Adams scholarships, which, oh, okay.
Yes, and in subsequent years as well.
Yeah.
So we're still expected to have the same participation rates. Um, and the, the, um, results will still count as they do for our accountability data, even though there's no, um, impact on students for graduation outside of their qualification for SEAL of Bili literacy or those scholarships.
And just so I understand, you, we are now expected to go back from the beginning of MCAS to provide the opportunity to receive a diploma? So that's like how many years ago? No Child Left Behind? When that, the inception of that? Wow.
So we're talking two thousand and three, the graduates of two thousand and three to, uh, two thousand and twenty-four. So there are several, there are several graduates early on that a lot of appeals were able to be filed. Um, and then the state changed the requirement for the appeals. They also added in bio, uh, well, they added in the science technology. So that too is going to be a little challenging, I was thinking about it. There are some that didn't have that as a requirement, but the, the diploma they'll get is a two thousand and twenty-five diploma. And STE is now a requirement when it wasn't for them in two thousand and three, I think through two thousand and eleven or twelve.
And this strikes me to be an incredible amount of work for the guidance staff.
It's going to be great.
I, I can't imagine just going through the records, but okay, this is what we must do. Um, and I, I don't know, would you have, Ms. Tatro, off the top of your head, how many people could qualify looking back? Who, who didn't pass? That would be like fun data, but too much work to do. Okay. Can you give me an example of the, uh, what an equivalent course would look like? You referenced that in your presentation, like what would be an equivalent course for the math? Passing Algebra I and Geometry?
Well, we have some students that take Algebra I in different forms. So it might be, um, that they sat for the course Algebra I, um, and it didn't go the way they had hoped, and they need another take of it, and so it might be a recovery course.
Okay.
Or it might be, um, we use Edgenuity as our online coursework. Some students take that course, so it's not necessarily titled Algebra I, but it is the equivalent. Um, same thing with Alfar After School Program. Um, and then in some ways, we have courses broken down by semester at the high school. Um, and so there might be, um, in, in some pathways for students that they've taken a Part A or a Part B, which together shows us the core coursework for Algebra I.
Okay, great, and I do, I do kudos, I, I have talked to many people who are where we are, and so many school districts did not use Mass Core. And it is a tremendous struggle right now, so I'm glad we're there. And, um, good luck to our guidance department. I'm, I'm hoping like everyone takes advantage of it. I hope we can get the word out.
The word, the word is definitely out, I apologize.
So, quick question, if we vote no on it, what happens?
If you vote, okay, oh, good question. So if you vote no, then we have to cut, there has to be a competency determination that the local board sets. So we have to come to you with something, because there has to be, that's part of the legislation. There has to be local high school graduation requirements, plus a competency determination that now is not MCAS. The state defined that for us, we never had to think about it.
So, eh, okay, so if we vote no, then this plan goes away, then a new plan will have to be developed, okay? Second of all, but I never want, I wondered this question all of a sudden. A D, right, determines a passing grade, right? It, that, right? Is that set by the state law?
No, it's local.
Oh, so, one, one thing I, I would, because a six D. Sixty-one, okay, they put it up to two points, determines that some, what, sixty, right? Is it sixty? Sixty-five, so one point from failing determines that this person is capable of being in the workforce. Where, in English, so if someone gets an English ten with a sixty, barely can read, according to this document, he is capable or she can capable of being in the workforce. Where we could set a standard, which I've always said this, that it should be moved up to a C to determine a passing grade instead of a D, because at least that fluctuation of a sixty to a fifty-nine, because one point less, he would be a fail, like he failed, or she failed. And that, we always used to say that in high school, like why is sixty, that just one point determines a person is eligible for graduation or failed, a subject. So that's one thing I would say is on a local level, we should be increasing our standard in grade level, saying a C is a passing grade instead of a D is a passing grade, if that's set. I know a lot of people are like, wait, wait, Ryan, but too bad, that's, eh, eh, they, eh, I, I know kids that passed that shouldn't have passed, but because they got a D in a subject, they passed in, in, they're not doing so good these days. So if we have the right to change that, I would say to move that grade up to a C. If we have that right, technically we could put that as a standard of a graduation requirement, right? That they have to get a C?
In theory you could, I, I would say this, that the competency determination, for instance, let's just talk about English, is for grade ten English. So that competency determination is over at grade ten. They still have to pass a junior year English and a senior year English. So there's still two more years of full English that they would have to pass and demonstrate proficiency in the coursework there. Um, also with the MCAS, when students reach that threshold of score, which I think I would equate to what you're saying is, is a sixty, we would, we would consider that a passing score with the plan, where we would track them for their remaining two years to make sure that they're slated for the appropriate courses and they're faring well. So it's, it's similar in that idea, whereas if they have a passing score in grade ten, we're still watching students in eleven and twelve to make sure they're persisting and have appropriate interventions to do well.
So response to that, so what happens if that student in his junior, senior year continues to get Ds across the board, does he still graduate?
Well, that, that's what it would be now with the graduation requirements. So we do have some students who, um, have ended up in that situation. Um, very rarely is it D across the board, usually there's, there's evidence there, and that's what the statute says, coursework. It doesn't necessarily say full year they're performing to their ability, but within the year's time, there's coursework that would tip the average to the sixty, that would indicate their proficiency in that area. So it's coursework, and so we're confident that our courses are covering the standards at that, for instance, grade ten English level, and they've demonstrated proficiency.
I would also, may I make a comment? Is, there's, there's a sense of urgency that, that we need right now. And then there's a time to think about this and plan for the next classes. And I think this is where we are, when I say sense of urgency. Uh, probably Ms. Tatro, uh, more so than Dr. Golovski and I, have just taken a nosedive into this to fully understand, uh, what we are up against. And so the reason we're here today and the reason, uh, all of our colleagues are in the same position and trying to figure out what they're going to put in front of their school committee, because we have a graduating class in five months that we have to make some decisions about. So I would urge the committee to, this, this isn't the last time we're going to have this conversation, and I think we need far more time than the few weeks we've given with not a lot of concrete guidance from DESI, which is surprising all of us. I mean, we've, we spent, uh, a whole half a day on Friday with our colleagues talking about this, because they're not giving us the, hey, this is what you guys should do, or think about these seven questions and, and, you know, fill in the blank. I mean, we're not getting any of that right now. Uh, so they're taking their time. So, so for me, I think we just, we need a sense of urgency to make sure our class of two thousand and twenty-five, we have a plan, we're going to do what the majority of the districts are doing and what has been the guidance that we've been given, is the coursework, it's competency, you have your high school graduation, local requirements, that's not going to change. And then allow us the couple of months coming, now we're going to have to present something more concrete for next year's class. So, so I'm just saying that as a little bit of a plea, but also think about, this is phase one. This is truly phase one. This decision came in November, DESI has not given us concrete, they're still planning and trying to give guidance. We make a decision, they come out with different guidance, now we're upending different things. Uh, so we're looking for some action tonight so that we can have Guidance Department and everybody move forward with the, the folks who are reaching out from previous years, and also alert our class of two thousand and twenty-five now what they need to do. And then, I'm guessing, if not this spring, early in the fall, we're going to be coming back to you and saying, we think this might be a better plan. DESI might give us more information, they keep promising that, that they'll have some more concrete sort of facts and, and ways to organize it. So I, I don't want to seem like I am dismissing, because we have had all of these conversations, Member Dzoglio, Member Maxwell, like, we're like, why can't we just use the test? We can't use this test. Uh, we have to figure this out, and that, we have staff that need to actually start doing this, like, yesterday. Um, so I would just put that out there as a step, this is a process, eh, you know, steps that we're going to have to take, sort of the right now, the what happens in the next five to six months, and then after that.
I just, I wanted to point out that, nah, in twenty-seven years here, there's a lot of kids that I've seen that, and I'm really passionate about our kids, so forgive me. There's a lot of kids I've seen that did not pass that test, and for whatever reason, I couldn't get them an appeal, right, with the state, because we're allowed to do that. And they are incredible community members as we speak. They're actively engaged here, in other places in Methuen, and they're successful, regardless of having their high school diploma. The ability to have them fill out a request form and immediately, because I know those kids, say, yep, I want you to get your diploma because you're deserving, is something that I think we should be looking at. And the flip side of that coin is, there are also some kids that really just test well, but they don't do the day-to-day things. So do we have some kids in however many years we've had the Coplex and the Adams that have actually received, been on the receiving end of the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship whose GPA was probably below a two-point-oh, and they weren't eligible for a four-year school? We have. High school is different for every single kid that walks through this door. Just because you aren't successful as a freshman or sophomore doesn't mean you can't turn your life around as a junior and senior. And for some of those kids that I couldn't do the waiver for, that was their reason. Their attendance freshman and sophomore year was terrible, and I couldn't file an appeal because it wasn't allowed. Nine absences was the state standard, nine in a year. There are so many things and people that could be positively impacted, and I know we need to think moving forward what we're going to do. This is not a carte blanche, everybody gets a diploma. I'm actually very comfortable telling you, that's not accurate. Because with the standards we set, we are having kids transfer in here as juniors and seniors that do not meet that requirement. Not because of us. We are working here right now, knowing the standards. We're working right now with kids to try to get them to where they should be. I'm asking you to really consider this, knowing that we're right away impacting, I have kids waiting, they're probably watching with their parents, who actually were accepted to college, and because they couldn't get the CD status in the last couple of years, those colleges deferred their acceptances, and I'm talking about some four-year schools, because they didn't pass MCAS, and I couldn't do an appeal because they didn't qualify. But here, they had As, Bs, Cs, and they got in. Colleges wouldn't take them because they didn't have the high school diploma. We have an opportunity to impact people from two thousand and three to two thousand and twenty-four. We have an immediate opportunity to impact our current kids in two thousand and twenty-five. And then we have the opportunity, if you want to review new standards, which definitely we've had that conversation, I'm really honest, we have that opportunity moving forward to do that. So am I literally standing in front of you going, yes, I'm asking you to vote for this? I am. Because I love our kids and love what I do.
So let's keep moving, uh, with, uh, Member Maxwell.
So I guess my concern is, I mean, can, is there a way to issue, um, a competency, competency exam in, in, in maybe not MCAS, but a different type of exam? Because, I mean, I know that Methuen, right now, we're working on grading and we're working on equitable grading, and we're going through that whole process, but we're not there yet. Um, and for you to say that they're showing proficiency in those things, it actually says that they need to be showing mastery of these skills and competency and knowledge contained at the state academic standards. They're not. The people that are requesting their, you know, their CD is, that they didn't pass the state standard. So they're not competent and knowledgeable in those state academic standards. So I, I don't know, I just, I have a hard time going forward with something that you, you're not, you're not at state standard. You're not, you're not showing that you're able to produce what you need to produce in order to graduate high school. Is there a new way, is there an exam that we can?
No, so there's no other exam other than MCAS that would equate to the state standard that we're talking about. I mean, we could pick a national test, it's not going to be what Massachusetts state standards are and what our course, courses and curriculum standards are required to be. And it would be somewhat random. I haven't heard any schools picking an assessment.
Equity and assessment is really a, a hot topic too. So a, a lot of the, many reasons people weren't fans of the MCAS was because of that. Um, because there's a lot of skills such as, um, for instance, language skills, right? And, and we're talking about English ten, it's only testing written language, not spoken language. There's a lot of, um, pieces to it, what types of questions are being asked? Is everyone familiar with that content? Or do you need background knowledge that some kids have and some don't? Is that equal, is it equitable, is it fair? Um, so to, in order for us to, first of all, create a test that would be reliable and valid and an actual measure of what the standards are, that, that's what the state took so many years to develop. And even still, there were some pretty solid arguments that it didn't do that well.
I just worry, I just, I, you know, being in like the lower schools and the upper schools and, you know, you're really required to turn in your work, it's not necessarily about the quality of your work that you're turning in. And I, I, that's concerning, because if we start doing that at the high school level, then...
Yeah, no. No.
Member Shabelia?
So first, first to Member DeZoglio's point about adjusting the grading. I mean, if that's a conversation we wanna have, I support the conversation. But that being said, I was an atrocious student in high school. The worst. I know that comes with a shock, but...
I was, too.
I barely graduated by the skin of my teeth, passing MCAS and graduating, but then managed to do okay in life. So I don't think adjusting the grading is a valid use of our time. But willing to have the conversation. That being said, how does the, throughout the whole campaign to get rid of MCAS, the narrative on the commercials was always teach to the test, stop teaching to the test. How does that change our curriculum? Or does it? So test or no test, our teaching remains the same?
Correct. Because our, so the curriculum standards in Massachusetts is what drove the MCAS. That's what drives our curriculum. So we are required to teach to the curriculum that has been implemented in Massachusetts.
It was a pretty good slogan.
Yeah. No, it's not gonna change our curriculum or our coursework.
Okay.
Am I, did I say that definitively enough?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, it's not gonna change anything that we're doing with our courses.
And then, looking at this slide here with the graduation requirements, the three items. I understand number one, that's four years, four-year commitment. Do your time. You check the box. The complete Methuen High School's credit requirement and the meet the standard for competency determination? That seems like the same thing twice. And I was hoping you could clarify that for me. Because I want, I wanna vote yes. I wanna support it. I feel like also, we don't really have a choice. But I wanna understand it so I can feel good about my vote.
Okay. Ms. Tatro's really wanting to answer this one.
I think the hard part with that is that we might have some students transfer in. And they transfer in their senior year. And if our competency determination is Algebra I and Geometry, and they transfer in and they're only at Algebra I, then unless we double them up in math, so they'll end up graduating with five credits of math, if they are successful, then that's where you might see someone be here for four years, but not meet that competency. They might have the credit requirements, but they don't meet the competency. So we've actually also had some kids that have been above 24 credits by the time their, end of their senior year. But they are missing a math credit because they failed their senior year. So actually, they're, they actually met the 24 credits, but they didn't meet the standards within the 24. And that kid may have passed, previously passed MCAS. So they, and we have some kids right now that have come in. They've passed MCAS and they're not, you know, some of those kids might not be on track. Did that make sense?
It does. And it brings flashbacks to having to register for classes. So, and I, it all clicks now. And then I had one other question about MCAS scores, but you guys have already answered that. So I'm good. Thank you.
Vice Chair?
So, of course, special ed kids are near and dear to my heart because I have multiple of them. And especially looking at the coursework, I'm concerned that English 10, there are some classes that are called English 10 that aren't actually at the state standard for 10th grader. So for instance, the course that my son is taking, he is taking English 10. He's getting an A in it. But the reality is, is that he's reading at a fourth grade level and he is writing at about a first grade level. And based on this, looking at a transcript, it would appear that he would pass that. And the reality is, is that he has not gotten the education that he needs to meet the state standards for 10th grade. And so, for kids like my son, we need to do something different than just looking at a transcript. Because the special ed kids need to actually get an education and actually meet those standards, right? And if they're not meeting those standards, then it's gonna affect me, but they shouldn't be getting a diploma. And in the long run, that diploma is gonna hurt a kid like me, my kid, because that diploma is actually going to prevent him from qualifying for DDS. And so, I think it's very important that when we say we're looking at Grade 10 English, it's Grade 10 English that actually meets the state standards of Grade 10 versus Grade 10 English, because we're just naming the class Grade 10 English because my son is a 10th grader and he's taking English, right? And so, I wanna be very cognizant of those kids that actually aren't meeting the state standards. And I, they shouldn't be getting a diploma. And just because my son has an A in Grade 10 English, he shouldn't be getting a diploma. And so, I wanna make sure that the special ed kids are being looked at. And we need to make sure that our special ed curriculum, especially in the sub-separates, is actually getting them to state standards by the time they graduate. And so, I just wanna be very cognizant of that. And I understand the need to do this now. But thinking further, we really need to be cognizant of the kids who aren't actually meeting state standards, even though they're taking a class that appears to be Grade 10 English.
Yep. And I think that's part of what we've started to have conversations about is the opportunity for especially some of our special education programming and our English learner programming is there. You know, I think there's a misconception when this, this vote passed that now all kids are just gonna get diplomas. And that's not true. Because there are kids that are not gonna meet the local graduation requirements or the competency determination or both, right? So there are some, again, opportunities that we're looking for. This is what I'm saying, like, in the coming time, right? And working with our colleagues sort of up against the same things is, how do we look at a situation where, you know, we were really like, Grade 10 was it in the competency determination part? How do we look at a four-year math curriculum instead that might cover in a very different way than we're thinking about it right now? And again, that's what I'm saying to you all is that, like, we just haven't even had the time to comprehend all of this. And Desi is still trying to give us some guidance and working through their own things to give us different ideas. But we see those two areas as areas for opportunity for our own program development and curriculum development. Because we, we just haven't had that opportunity because we've been so focused on making sure kids are coming in from a new country, their freshman year. We gotta get them in MCAS prep for bio, MCAS prep. Like, we gotta get them the opportunity to have a diploma. And then by their, their senior year, make sure that they have all these courses in place, right? It doesn't always happen, and it's still not gonna always happen. But what opportunities can we afford that make sense, that meet that? And we are gonna be, I think, I do think Desi was purposeful when they said coursework and not courses. Partly for what you're saying, is that it is not just about the course title. It has to be about the coursework. And that may happen over three years, or two years, or semester in different titles. So I think that allows us that now, but the further conversation about programming in the coming months.
Right. But my concern is, is that what you want us to pass tonight says, Grade 10 English or equivalent, right? And so, my son has Grade 10 English, and I would be very upset that he would graduate with a fourth grade reading level and you would give him a diploma saying that he has met the state standards. Because that diploma actually diminishes my other kid's diploma, right? And it's no longer the same. So I just wanna be cognizant that we're actually meeting state standards, not just getting a passing grade in Grade 10 English.
Member Keegan, can I just add to that a little bit? So with students with special education, we also have the team process that we have to go through to look at those very things as well. Because we talk about anticipated date of graduation. So the individual team for each student has to look at all of those pieces as a whole, too, with the parent or guardian, so that we are making those cognizant decisions and not just basing it off of a course title.
Right. I'm just saying that what you're putting in front of us tonight is just a course title, right? And we're agreeing to just a course title. And I'm just saying that there is a course at the high school that is called that that actually doesn't meet the state standards for Grade 10. And we can have kids getting fantastic grades in those, in that class, and they really haven't met the state standard.
But I believe, right, I believe that wouldn't be an equivalent and that would be part of the transcript review by the Guidance Department. Because they would know that that course is not an equivalent to the Grade 10 English that we're identifying.
Just a point of clarification. I thought there was a waiver process, too, for the special ed students. And previously with MCAS, we had a portfolio approach to a lot of the special ed graduating. Now, I understand what you're saying in terms of the people not going to school and work, making sure they can graduate, and I understand that. But you're throwing out the baby with the bathwater. We had the best standards of the country and the world, right? And we tossed it away. Now, I think we're adhering to the referendum language. And the regulations are like way behind us. So that's what we need to do, whether we agree with it or disagree with it. And I totally sympathize with you. We might be on different positions, but we need to do it for these kids right now. Because we have to adhere to the language that was passed by the voters. And the regulations will catch up to us, and the legislature might catch up to us. Is that accurate?
Hundred percent.
Okay. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Again, having been here 27 years, I think we're ahead of the curve in our mindset and our thinking. And we're very much in tune with exactly what you were talking about, Lori. And that's a conversation that we were already having. In the Counseling Department, we're already having. You know, the counselors are saying, students in this program versus this program, it is happening. And I think it's important for you to know that.
And we're with Mass Corps standards.
We are with Mass Corps.
And that's all I need to know at this stage. What else can we do? Thank you.
Member Donovan?
Just quickly, a student, to fail a class because of attendance, how many days of class do you miss?
They don't fail because of attendance. They actually, a student doesn't fail a class because of attendance. A student can actually get an A in a class, but receive a CDF, which is a credit denial.
That's what I meant.
Failure.
Thank you. Okay.
So a student can get, their report card could actually say CDF-A. So they earn the A, but they get the credit denied because of absences.
Okay.
And they can recover that the next quarter.
Okay.
By not hitting the threshold of absences, they can recover their first quarter credit back.
And how many absences would result in a credit?
I don't know. It's in a...
It's in the, it's in, I can look it up.
It's in the, and I'm sorry that right now I can't, off the top of my head. I wasn't, it's five.
It's five?
It's five.
A semester?
It used to be more. A term.
A term.
It used to be more. It was lowered.
Okay.
So...
Okay. Thank you.
All right. At this point, I think we've had sufficient discussion, so we'll move on to a vote. Let's take a roll call.
Member DeZoglio?
No.
Member Donovan?
Yes.
Member Keegan?
Yes.
Member Maxwell?
No.
Member Shabelia?
Yes.
Member Willett?
Yes.
Mayor Borogon?
Yes.
Five yes, two no.
All right. So that'll come back on the next agenda, I believe, for a second read? Or is that adopted?
This is adopted.
Okay. So we'll move on. At this point, we have on the agenda Member DeZoglio's legislation that would require, in essence, the state to conduct annual health inspections. It's not on here for a vote simply because it's not actionable. We can't force the state to do something. But nevertheless, Member DeZoglio, if you wanna take a minute to discuss this, that's fine.
Yeah. So just doing homework and going through what has happened in the city, one of the things I, I think the school committee should know is what's going on in the buildings, especially when inspection reports are given. I know their public record, but however, discussions, one of the biggest things that we talked to teachers and staff was that it seemed like we were ignoring the inspections, which was never the case because we didn't know what previous inspections were taking place. And unless we went and asked for it, it would, it would fall, like, it was never given to us. So one of the things I wanted to bring up was that we get a copy, especially the superintendent also gets a copy. And of all inspections moving forward, when it regards to the schools, because we should be entitled to know what these inspections are coming out. So if we were to bring it here, we can have discussions about it and moving forward, action plans that should take place. That's why I wanted to bring it up, more I did in my homework. You can't force the state as much as I wish you could. But, but you can't, but we could work it on a local level. So that's why I was up for a discussion, see what we can do to possibly bring it to a policy.
Thank you, Member Donovan. I just wanna point out that we are at 9:40, and there's a school committee policy that mandates that...
You've got credit.
If we get to 10 o'clock...
You, you call me Member Donovan.
My first event started this morning at 7:30. I apologize, Member DeZoglio.
She gets everything.
So it is 9:40, and there is a school committee policy that requires us to, in essence, punt on any agenda items we don't get to before 10 o'clock. So I just wanna be cognizant of the time. We have some time-sensitive things. So if it's all right with you, we'll keep moving. Okay. So now, we are on to Finance and Operations, the Expenditure Report. Do we have any questions relative to the Expenditure Report? If not, we're gonna keep moving. The Revolving Funds Report. Questions, comments from the committee?
I will note, we did get the deposit from the state for our circuit breaker, the 2.3. That's, that's shown in here. I wanna make you aware of that. I also wanna make you aware, somebody had asked about the revolving account for our facilities. We do actually pay a full custodian out of that account. It's not showing in there because he hasn't actually got paid for the full year yet. But there is, we do use that to offset any overtime, due to rentals, fix anything in the auditoriums or gyms that need fixing, as well as it covers one full-time custodian at Branch Street. Just wanted to make you aware of that.
Member Willett?
Again, I wanna get those accounts, both the parking fees and that down. Utilize those accounts. We've had conversations, and again, I know you guys have been inundated with issues. And I know I had a request that's gonna be at a future meeting about what was expended by the food service. And that's the list I'm gonna be looking for. And I know the past down with the invoices. I know that's, that's something you're gonna provide to me this week. But again, I see accounts of $62,000 and $127,000. And we're scrambling to do stuff or make purchases. And we talk about traffic, and we're not utilizing those accounts for the, you know, and that's the concern I have. Not to be, criticize anyone individually, but I wanna see movement in the next few months on that. That's it. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Member Maxwell?
Just a quick question on the general budget, the supplies being 752,000. Is that supplies for all of the schools? Just because I see a lot of teachers saying that they're not accessing supplies and getting supplies. And I know we've had this conversation a bajillion times. So I just wanna make sure that, like, that money is, in fact, for that reason, correct?
That's for all supplies. That's custodial supplies, building supplies.
Any supplies?
Any supply.
Okay.
And if they need, if there's a need for school supplies, you need to contact their administrator and they, they should be able to get what they need.
Any other questions or comments? If not, we'll move on to the Grants Report. Member Shabelia?
There are some grants on here. I mean, I see the 2012 Tenney Memorial Fund. I assume that's revolving. The Marsh PTO Playground, I mean, it's got 677 bucks in it. There's a dairy one that hasn't been used. 21st Century Continuation that hasn't been used. I mean, and then there's a lot of the...
I mean, and then there's a lot of the 2024 grants that I assume we have to probably manage early, close at some point, because they're renewing, because they appear to be federal, at least, that's how they're labeled.
The, the title grants that were 2024, we extended so, to use the remaining money this year, too, so we try to push back our purchases and save, save some money that way. Some of the remaining funds, I think we talked about before, might have to do with MTRS or retirement payoffs. There's a couple on here that are in the process of closing out, but there are some 24 grants we're still able to use.
Yeah, not, not to channel Member Willett in any sense, but if we can move some of them along that have been lingering, that, I hope so. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Member Maxwell?
All right, just a quick question, the civics, teaching and learning, is that coming? Is that why, because I know it says fiscal year '25, is that in the works?
That's, that's a new one, yep. So, we were awarded that for this year. So, that was a grant for professional development, for civics education, and also pays for our participation in Generation Citizen, which is a program that all the eighth graders do for their civics project.
And then, what about the 2F promoting safe and healthy learning environments? What's that?
2F has to do with the Youth Participatory Action Research Grant, so we're using that at all upper schools and the high schools. So, we're starting clubs where there'll be two advisors per school and 12 to 14 students. And we've partnered with Up for Learning, so they're our consulting partner, who will take care of, of the retreats that are in district. The goal of the Youth Participatory Action Research is for students and adults to work on an even playing field, to address a problem they see that needs fixing, but the whole idea is to elevate student voice.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? If not, we'll move on to student activity reports. Vice Chair?
On a, the class of 2024 and most of them are still in the grammar schools, and that money needs to be moved to the high schools, because it's, it's in the wrong place, basically, and it belongs to the freshman class. And as well as the Timony has their grades misnumbered, so they have grade eight as the class of 2024. And so, their, the account name is incorrect. And it's every single grade level, it's completely misnumbered. That's all.
Got it, I wrote it down. Yes, I wrote it down.
All right, that's been noted. All right, let's keep moving. Food Services Report? No questions or comments? Contract approval, we have none. At this point, we're on to notifications of appointments and other personnel matters. We need a motion in a second to approve one new preschool teacher and three preschool program assistants.
So moved.
Motion from Member Shabelia, second from Member DeZoglio. Discussion?
One question. We're out of space now, huh?
Uh, no.
This is the last room. For this year, just for this year. Because remember, we have two kindergarten...
Better go link to...
Correct.
Okay.
We still have a few rooms left in the rooms that we would have for preschool.
Okay.
But kind of amazing.
This will be, do you want me to say it out loud? This would make the 18th preschool classroom.
Cool.
18. So, six years ago, it was nine.
We didn't need a building, it's fine.
It's 18 right now, and yeah, I, I, yes. I'm all done talking.
Yeah, so...
Do we have any other questions or comments? If not, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Other business from the committee? Member Shabelia, have an update regarding the Transportation Subcommittee?
Transportation Subcommittee was supposed to meet today. We're going to have to bump that update to the next meeting because the posting didn't get up in time.
All right. Next, regarding the audit, I had a meeting today with representatives from previously Markham, now CBIZ, with the CAFO and our purchasing director, to walk them through some concerns that we had regarding some proposed amendments to the contract. We got most of those questions answered, and we're awaiting finished product to be submitted after vetting from CBIZ's legal team. And my anticipation is that I will be able to have that on the council agenda in time for the 21st, as I have been aiming for. So, at this point, unless there are any last-minute issues that need to be dealt with, which I don't foresee, I anticipate being able to submit that to the council for approval at the next meeting. Just to point out, as I referenced earlier, we're still waiting on certification of free cash from the state. So, the funding mechanism for the audit will be free cash, and so, there is a, another item on the agenda to implement, transfer free cash upon certification to pay for this. So, you know, we expect that also in the next week, so I'm hopeful for the 21st that we'll make some progress with the audit. Any other business for, for, yes, Vice Chair?
When do we expect that the audit will be completed and we'll have a report?
We're giving them up to six months.
Okay, so, we would expect them to start, say, February, March?
Upon contract approval.
Okay. So, we're not, we're not expecting anything until next school year? Is that correct?
Not necessarily. Well, if it's going to be wrapping up by, by June, no later than June, you know, we'd be looking at information in time for summer.
If they have six months.
So, yeah, it's, it's not something that we're not going to have, I'm sorry, I misunderstood what you were asking. At this point, you know, we would be looking at...
Next school year, we'll have the report.
It's not something where we'll have...
So, we will not have it this spring at all, for sure.
Unless by some unforeseen circumstance, they wrap up their work early, I don't envision that.
Okay.
You know, we want them to, you know, to take the time they need and do a comprehensive, thorough report.
Absolutely, no, I just, I just want the expectation that we're not getting it this school year, it's going to be next school year.
Yeah, this isn't something we'll have in the next couple of weeks, certainly.
Okay, thank you.
Any other business from the committee? If not, at this point, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn our business session of January 13, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Member DeZoglio, second from Member Shabelia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, the time is 9:52 PM, and we are adjourned.
Good night, Methuen.